This program is brought to you by Newsworks in cooperation with the City of Eau Claire. This program is simulcast on WRFPLP 101.9 FM.
Beaton.
Here.
Bergy.
Here.
Christopherson.
Here.
Emanuel.
Greigert.
Here.
Strobel.
Here.
Weld.
Here.
Worthman.
Here.
John.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk, and welcome everyone to Monday, June 25th, City Council meeting. During its Monday meetings, the Eau Claire City Council holds public hearings and public discussion, which gives residents of our community an opportunity and chance to weigh in on the important decisions that we are going to be making at our legislative session tomorrow at 4:00. I want to welcome everyone to council chambers this evening, and thank Valley Media Works for live streaming the proceedings for folks who weren't able to be here this evening. You can catch that at valleymediaworks.org. If you would like to dress the council this evening, I'm just going to run through that protocol real quick. We have a few agenda items that I know folks are very interested to get to. Once I introduce an item, staff, in some cases, members of the city council will make a presentation on that item, and then following that, council will ask, often ask, a number of questions just to clarify and better prepare ourselves. At that point, we then open it up to public discussion. When you approach the podium, please announce your name, please announce your address, and then share your comments. With council's permission this evening, I would like us to encourage folks to stay to five minutes, but if comments run a little long with your permission, I would like to let that happen. Sometimes after you present your comments, council members may have follow-up questions for you, and so please stay at the podium for a few extra seconds just to make sure, and I'll try to ask around and make sure we catch that. Lastly, if you do not wish to speak tonight at the podium, but you still wish to share a comment with the council, there are forms at the back of the room that you can fill out, and we then receive those before our legislative meetings on Tuesday, so please don't hesitate to fill out a form if you don't come to the podium. With that introduction, I would like to get to our first order of business this evening, and that is regarding low-income transit fares, public discussion item number one. And this discussion is on the proposal amending the City of Eau Claire's schedule of fees and licenses by establishing a low-income transit fare. Mr. Winsens this evening will have a presentation on it.
Thank you, Council Vice President Worthman, members of the city council. As Vice President Worthman indicated, on your legislative agenda for tomorrow evening will be a resolution amending the schedule of fees and licenses to create a reduced fare for persons and families experiencing low income. Just for background, as many of you may recall, last fall, as part of the budget process, the schedule of fees and licenses was amended, and the cash fare on our transit system for a single trip was increased from $1.50 per trip to $1.75 per trip. The monthly pass was increased from $45 to $50 per month for the monthly, for the pass. At that time, even when the fees and licenses schedule was approved, several council members expressed some concern about the effect that this may have on persons and families experiencing low income, and Councilmember Weld and former Councilmember Mitchell requested and brought forward a resolution to take a look at what could be done to have a reduced fare. There was a staff committee that met on several occasions, and we also received input from some of our community partners regarding having a low-income fare for the transit system, and staff brought that report and recommendations back to the city council for your review and direction. So we did receive direction from the city council a month ago to proceed with what essentially is a rollback of the fare increase that took effect on January 1st. So this would amend the schedule of fees and licenses to establish a low-income cash fare of $1.50 per trip rather than the $1.75, and establish a monthly pass rate of $45 per month as opposed to the current rate of $50 per month. Because this change to the schedule of fees and licenses reduces revenue to the transit system, it will also increase the general fund subsidy that goes to the transit system by approximately $7,000. In order to make up for this revenue loss or increase that general fund subsidy, an appropriation is required, so we're proposing to appropriate $7,000 from the general fund administrative services budget to the transit operating fund to offset that revenue loss. Because this does appropriate funds, a two-thirds vote will be required to adopt this particular resolution. With that, I'd be happy to answer questions.
Thank you, Mr. Winsens. Is there any questions from council tonight? Thank you. Members of the public would like to speak, you may do so now.
Just curious if you're doing anything for veterans.
Sir, would you approach the podium, just so everyone can hear? Good evening.
Hi, good evening. My name's Dick Hyde. I'm just wondering on this transit if you're doing anything regards veterans.
Certainly, thank you. At this, at this point, I'll invite Mr. Winsens back up and try to address that.
The proposed change to the schedule of fees and licenses does not directly affect veterans. However, certainly anybody within our community that's experiencing low income would be eligible to apply for the reduced fare pass or the reduced fare single trip. So again, anybody in our community, whether they're a veteran or anybody else, is certainly eligible to apply for that if they're experiencing low income.
Thank you.
Sorry to bring this again, but my question is, what are you doing specifically for veterans? Not low-income veterans, not disabled veterans. What are you doing specifically for a veteran?
Mr. Hyde, thank you for your comments. If I can just say that our public comment period is really for us to take all of the input that we receive. At this point, as our finance director had stated, we don't have a specific program for that, but I know that council is certainly interested in this issue and in trying to make affordable transit for everyone, and so we're going to take your input and really appreciate you coming down this evening and offering it. Thank you. Are there any other members of the public who wish to speak on this item this evening regarding low-income transit fares? Seeing none, are there any additional questions from our council? Councilmember Christopherson.
Thank you, Vice President Worthman. I wonder if we could invite what the veterans' need actually is in transit fares. If there's no other public that's going to speak, maybe he could expand his...
Certainly. If you, Councilmember Christopherson, if you would like to ask that question of Mr. Hyde, please do so. Sir?
Thank you, Mr. Hyde. I'm really appreciative that you've made your trip down here today. So if, what is the need that is specific to veterans that you want us to consider?
Well, a lot of veterans, not myself, for example, I'm not low, clearly not low-income in whatever else with the things I've done in my life and whatever else. So, I mean, I don't need a fare or subsidy or something of that nature, but there are many veterans out there that need to ride from time to time. Sometimes they have their own vehicles and whatever, but sometimes you need to be on that public transportation, and for example, up in Minneapolis, I take my VA card, show it to the bus driver, on you go, no fare. If I have to get to the VA hospital and whatever else, Carter Ford or whatever has a van or whatever, you call up, they take you right up there, no charge, bring you back, no charge. You know, I think there should be something in the bus program somewheres along the line that if you have a bus fare, maybe it's like a student fare, or maybe it is the low-income fare, and you get the, you get to ride for the dollar or whatever it is, a ride. I just, I just think there can be something where a veteran has something regardless of its, I mean, I don't think you have to be low-income, disabled, the fact that you're just a veteran, you should be able to ride the city transportation.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, appreciate it. Are there any other members of the public who wish to say a few words on this item? Seeing none, we will move to our second item this evening regarding a steam locomotive. This is a public discussion on the amendment to purchase, to a purchase agreement for locomotive 2719, and exercising the city's option to purchase. This member, Councilmembers Strobel and Councilmember Greigert have seconded this, and I believe Councilmember Strobel would like to do a presentation this evening to catch us all up to speed on what this is. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Vice President Worthman and the rest of the city council members. First time I've ever done this up here, so please bear with me, and there's a lot of train people here that'll probably correct a few things I say. I'm going to do the best I can. I wanted to thank Kenzie Havichek from Visit Eau Claire, who helped me at the PowerPoint, and is also going to read a letter of support from Visit Eau Claire later on in the meeting. I've been thinking about this train and trying to work out a plan for its return for the last three years. I worked hard when we sold this to the LSRM, which is, I believe, the Lake Superior Railroad Museum, to include language to allow us to have this option and discussion. I would like to thank Councilmember Greigert for seconding this resolution, and I'm really encouraged by the support and excitement I've heard so far, and I'm really excited to be able to make the presentation to the council today. I'm pretty sure my, some of my fellow council members may not even remember what this train looked like being on display in Carson Park because it moved in 1996. So I would have, I would have liked to have all the details worked out for you, site selected, shelter design, funding to move and care for it, et cetera, but time flies, and without council direction and public feedback, I don't think it was possible to iron out all these details. My hope is that our resolution will allow us to bring council some choices and ideas, and with that direction, we can then move forward with a solid plan and timeline. Most of you know I have a passion for history, and what kid doesn't like trains? So this is a perfect issue for me. So in the spirit of fun, that is listed in our, as one of our strategic goals, let's bring home a train. I didn't plan to drop my whistle. So we got a letter from the Chippewa Valley Museum, and it was very difficult, even in 1959, to get a train. As was described in a letter from the Chippewa Valley Museum, a group of water street businessmen actually worked long and hard to secure a train for Eau Claire in 1959. The museum thinks that this is an artifact from the city worth considering to bring back. It was moved to and displayed as a static display in Carson Park from 1960 to 1996. This is a resolution in your packet from the Landmarks Committee that passed a resolution supporting the effort to return the 2719 to Eau Claire. In 1994, the city's of Eau Claire's Landmark Commission applied for and got the train listed on the National Register of Historic Places. It was the first locomotive in Wisconsin to receive such a designation. It is only one of six locomotives of this class built in 1923, and only two remain. The following year, the Landmarks Commission received a grant that helped the LTPF, which is the Locomotive Tower and Preservation Fund, work on and restore the engine. Per that contract with the city, when the city sold it to the LTPF, it stipulated that the train was not to leave the Eau Claire area, and that's part of the contract with it, number four. It was never the intent of the council that this should happen, nor could I find anywhere that the council approved its move until we sold it to Duluth. So in 1996, it was moved from Carson Park to Altoona's Roundhouse, and when that was taken down, the Roundhouse, it sort of left the LTPF in a tough spot, and they eventually leased the train to the LSRM, who ran the train from 2005 to 2013 until the boiler rebuild sidelined it. It's my recollection that someplace before 2015, there was sort of a dispute between the LTPF and the Lake Superior Museum, and LTPF was looking to bring the train back to Eau Claire or sell it to others. So the City of Eau Claire had an option to purchase. It became complicated, and train people, it became complicated. So I, I think there are members of the train community here tonight actually that feel that it, we should leave it in Duluth with the possibility of someday it may run again. Three years ago, it was really a busy time for the council. We had the Confluence Project going on, and Altoona also was busy trying to get River Prairie up and running. So I, I think the easiest thing to do at that time was just to exercise our option to buy it for a buck and turn around and sell it to Duluth for two bucks. However, the council did unanimously agree to a stipulation that the city had the right to repurchase a train for $4 within a three-year time period, and that time period is now upon us. It's really hard to get a train anywhere, and certainly you would never get one for four bucks. I have a couple examples, make sure I'm in the right spot, of options of possible shelters. This is one from my hometown of Antigo. Shelter was built for free with donated material and labor. It sits right next to their museum on the main road through town. People always stop, some have been married in front of it, and it's a, has a real sense of pride for the community. The next picture was actually taken by Councilmember Greigert last week in Bismarck, North Dakota, similar-sized community of ours, and this is a train that they have in a shelter in that community. So I put the resolution up here, just want to give you my thoughts on that. I think this is the time to do that. Am I right? My thought on the first, therefore, be it resolved, was to gain us some time to firm up plans prior to moving the train so that we can move it one time and not have to worry about the museum charging us some higher rent to keep the train up there. The 120-days item on there was, with no charge to move it, was actually agreed upon between the Tower Preservation Group and the LSRM and their lease agreement, so I'm thinking that they would honor that if we were to buy it back. They also said it could not be moved between November 1 and May 1 due to the weather. So this would give us until spring, where we would hopefully have a plan in place. The second clause on there is if they decline, then I propose that we just exercise our option to buy it based on the estimate that we have to get it here to a spur line, and I can give you more thoughts on my reasoning for that tomorrow in our discussion. Then option number three, Councilmember Greigert and I will work together, more input, work with Visit Eau Claire and others who have more knowledge and resources frankly than we do as individuals, to compile information from the public and others in time to bring it back to the sole council in September. So when options are brought back, I envision some type of public-private funding. We have many examples of this, from the pickleball courts, the Veterans Trail, Baroque Sculpture, Jeffers Park Ballfields, Light the Bridge, et cetera. So we know the cost to get it here to a spur line, and there would be a cost to move it from there to a final site as well. The shelter, we were hoping to get donated materials, and also thought it'd be a good public service project for a group to construct it. Then we'd need a small annual maintenance budget figured in as well, and I think the cost to make this happen is not, is not as, as bad as some would make it seem. And if one of the options the council chooses happens to be a neighboring city, then funding would really not be an Eau Claire issue. As a council member, I like choices, and it is our intention we bring those to you. I do look forward to the public input tonight and a little more discussion tomorrow. And then in wrapping up, we have a cost estimate to get it from Duluth to a spur line here in Eau Claire. Again, there would be more cost to move it from, to a permanent site unless we bring it, the permanent site is next to a rail line where it could be craned over. So we received a really nice support letter from Visit Eau Claire, and it says, "We need to preserve the artifacts of our stories," and that it would be an investment in our heritage tourism and add to tourism economic development. Then they have also offered to help gather and coordinate information as well as help with the fundraising if necessary. Kenzie, the marketing director, has already put together the start of a GoFundMe page. I believe this, this train is the property of the city. It was gifted to us, was not intended to leave the area. It's part of our history, and I want to bring it home. So let's listen and talk, and then let's bring a train home. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Strobel. If you want to, I think if you sit down, that'd be fine to answer questions. If I could just clarify with council this evening, the questions for Councilmember Strobel are really on the facts of it, and if we could steer clear of sort of the pros and cons and getting into the dialogue about why it's a good idea or why it's not, that would be great. And thank you, Councilmember Strobel, for sort of sticking just to the facts, but I appreciate that. And then after a few questions, we'll open it up for folks here this evening to come, to come speak. Do council members at this time have any follow-up questions they would like to ask? Councilmember Strobel? Councilmember Anderson?
Thank you. My question, you mentioned this in your, in your talk, but I just wanted to get a little clarity. You mentioned that the funding for moving it, you're imagining public-private partnerships and things like that to come in with the funding for moving it from Duluth to Eau Claire.
Yes.
Great, thank you.
Any further questions for Councilmember Strobel? Seeing Councilmember Bergy.
Well, we have a chance to ask him more questions after we hear from the public?
We can, and tomorrow too, so.
Okay.
Councilmember Christopherson.
Thank you, Vice President Worthman. I became unclear as to whether or not it's in running order, or can it be brought back to running order?
Councilmember Strobel?
It's my understanding that it could be.
Further questions? Seeing none, if folks would like to approach the podium to offer comments, and as much as you can, keep them to five minutes, but if it runs over, that's, that's okay.
This one, yeah. My name's Dave Peterson. I would like to speak about this engine because I've been with this engine for over 40 years, and so I do have some perspective about it. I'm interested to see these pictures up here because that was one of our restorations we did in the city park for the city. In 1971, I moved here to take a job and pretty much neglected the SUE line 2719 because I was a Burlington fan, and when I did see it, it was in a state of disrepair. The lights that were there were not functioning, and it was starting to rust. When Roche Leck was the president of the First Wisconsin Bank here in Eau Claire, and I signed, formed the Chippewa Valley Railroad with the idea of operating a steam locomotive in the Chippewa Valley area, we, we investigated a lot of different options, and they were very difficult to do, and we did center on building the Chippewa Valley Railroad, which had been running for 40 years. Which is interesting in that is that when I was negotiating with Fred Baumgartner on the lease, he said, "Would you please take over the operation and maintenance of that engine in the park because the city doesn't want to do it?" So we agreed to do that, and over 20 years, we did that, and the only public group that came forward to help us was some volunteers from Kmart. So our group spent hours and days and money removing sheet metal, painting, sandblasting, et cetera, to maintain it for our lease. About, somewhere around the early 90s, I was on the Wisconsin Trust for Historic Preservation Board and talked to people about this engine, and I said, "Well, the first thing you should do is get it on the National Register of Historic Places." So I began working on that for the engine. Our group, the Chippewa Valley Railroad, co-funded with the City of Eau Claire to get that on the register. After that, we contracted with a person from the Norfolk Southern Steam Program in, out east to come and do an assessment of the locomotive, because over the years working with it, we thought this thing had some, some possibility. The throttle was still loose, we took off one of the cylinder caps, found steam cylinder on one side of the cylinder, and decided we should move ahead. Well, the cost to do a static display was $90,000, according to our consultant from the railroad. To put it back in service based on its condition, it was $480,000. One of the state boiler inspectors went inside the engine on his own and said the boiler looked pretty good. So with that, we started moving ahead to, to see if we could do that. We did do that, and we raised, we, I wrote the grant for $480,000 for the state of, the state of Wisconsin, and this, part of that grant was for the city or someone else to raise 20% of that full amount. So we raised $90,000 privately, and the city was not involved in that at all. But the people were very excited to have a running steam engine, not a static display engine. I've been around enough museums, and I know where the people go. They go to see the thing that runs. Come up to Carson Park and watch the smoke, and you'll see that, that very same thing. So we got the grant, and away we went, and part of this project involved with moving, removing the asbestos from that engine. Most steam engines have asbestos. We had an initial bid for $25,000 to remove the asbestos, and that was 1996. We did it ourselves because we could do it, and I was one of those that helped to remove the asbestos. We followed all the DNR rules and did it properly. So the engine went into service in 1998, and we did run it out of the Chippewa Falls area because the Union Pacific didn't allow steam on their tracks, although they were very helpful in renting the Roundhouse to us. We ran the engine for several years until the Wisconsin Central was bought by the Canadian National, and a variety of things changed the insurance drastically, and that really did put us in a bind. We did run a couple seasons up in Spooner, we could ferry up there, but the real killer was taking down the Roundhouse in Altoona. And then it sat outside, and we did what we could do to maintain it, but then the museum and other parties decided they would like to move it up to Duluth, at least get it, keep it running because it was in running condition. So with the Union Pacific's help, we did move it up there, the museum, and several of us spent a whole summer trying to get that engine ready to run and just be towed up there. So then we ran it into Duluth, it came up in 2006, and I went up there to work with the engine. I fired, I worked on it, I ran it up to Two Harbors and back, and, and then also got an extension so we could run another season with the FRA. So I worked with the FRA on these projects all the way from the beginning. What has happened to the engine, it just needs a 15-year inspection. There's over, talking close to a million dollars of investment in this engine to date. A 15-year inspection is a standard FRA boiler inspection, which means you take out, most of the boiler tubes go and inspect it and put it back together again. But it, the engine is in very good shape. What has delayed it running again is this three-year time period. The museum would have, would have gone ahead with that 15-year inspection, and I was ready to do the, the necessary calculations for that locomotive to see it run. So any delay now will put that off. In the meantime, I helped them restore another steam engine because they wanted to run another steam engine again. So I'll be back up there again and running that one, but the 2719 is scheduled to run again, and it's just now shop time, money, et cetera, to get it going again. So it's, it's very disappointing to me to, with my history of the engine, to know that I was asked, and our group was asked, to take it over when the city didn't want to take care of it in the first place. It sat in Altoona for a couple years. Nobody came forward. I'm sure the UP would have just pushed it over here. I'm sure the UP would have just pushed it over here for nothing back then. Nothing until, oh, we're going to send it out of town. Now, we ran this engine not only just in the Chippewa Valley. We ran from Ladysmith, we ran down to Chalkton City, we ran up to Superior. We were running as best we could all over western Wisconsin, over to Somerset, you know, crossed into Minnesota and back. The engine, if it's running, can come back here. I've seen railroads change management. Just was on one out in Virginia last year. Been mothballed for twenty years, and all of a sudden, change in management, it is running again. So Union Pacific may change. They're starting to restore another steam engine, so who knows in a few years? And that's, that's a way to come back here running. And I think people would like that more than just a static display. I'm afraid if it goes in the park, it'll just sit there, and there will not be enough interest in it.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson.
Any questions I can take later?
Absolutely, thank you. Do you counsel have questions for Mr. Peterson? Councilmember Anderson?
Hi. Thank you so much for coming and, and sharing your experience with this engine. You mentioned that you're concerned that if it does go to a static display, that interest will kind of be lost, and momentum will be lost. Would there be damage to the engine itself by being placed outdoors in the elements? Or, you know, is it, is it possible to do a static display and then have it run later? What are your thoughts on that?
Well, most engines that I've seen sitting in a, in a park are, they're usually deteriorating. And right now, the trend is taking them out of park, not putting them back. There's one in Saint Louis, in Nashville now that I've seen. It is a beautiful locomotive. It's been in a shelter, it's, needs work, it's going to take, that'll probably take three quarters of a million dollars to put that back. It would have to be trucked out for some other, it's not anywhere near a railhead. So there's, there's another one just down in Texas. It cost them fifty thousand bucks just to move it a couple of miles in town. So it isn't cheap, but once these things go back in, they're really tough to get out. The other danger is, once you have it in a situation where it's on display, the FRA, when they start looking at boilers and all these things, it's considered like it's not in service. In the museum, any of these engines that are in, you know, have been in service can be listed by the FRA, it just is not in service, you just haven't done the inspection. So, you know, every year, you, if you have it in, in your care, that way you file a form with the federal government saying it's not in service. And that happens in all the, all the places around the country. You go down to Silverton, where they have the Durango and Silverton Railroad, they're constantly redoing their engine. Some may sit there for five or six years till they either get the money or put it in rotation, but just listed it as out of service. One of our boilers in the park just replaced the boiler, and the state's got it listed as out of service. But once you lose that paper trail, you just really start all over again.
Thank you.
And it won't get easier.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. I think we have a follow-up question, too, from Councilmember Beaton.
Thank you. Councilmember Strobel mentioned some ways that the public enjoys a static engine in, in that people visit it, or maybe it's a venue for an event like a wedding. And just because I'm not familiar with these things, can you talk a little bit about how the public might enjoy a train that is running? Like, what, like, what might happen in northern, in northern Minnesota?
Oh, well, I mean, you can do all kinds of things. I mean, when we, when we ran ours, we, we had, you know, dinner on the train sometimes, variety of things like that, if you're running it. If you're not running it, it's just, it's just an artifact. First time I was at a big museum was out in Steam Town in Vermont many, many years ago. There were several locomotives on display, one engine running. Where do you think the people were? They weren't wandering around like I was, taking pictures of old steam engines. They were there, but the smoke was. So that, that's been my, you know, long on the engines that run and short on the display, unless you have something really unique that you can't see, or something's been saved. So, I mean, the museum in Duluth has a great collection, and they, they are constantly rebuilding their engines, their cars, and they have a fine collection, and it's, some of the cars are priceless, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any further questions? Seeing none. Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Anyone else here to speak on this issue? Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Dan Mun, Jr. I live at eight oh nine East Lexington Boulevard. Been a resident here since nineteen eighty-five. Actually, a train enthusiast going back to my childhood. Grandfather was actually an engineer on the Chicago Northwestern out of Spooner. I love trains. If I, if there's something to get emotional about, that's one of them for me. So this has been a wonderful asset to the city. When I saw the picture, I was around here, as you gather, at that time. It's just a great thing to have in the community. I remind us all that it was a gift to the city. When we were considering this three years ago, I spoke in favor of keeping the 2719 here at that time. I urge you again, as strongly as possible, to return that here. There is something that can be done with that here. Let's make it an asset for Eau Claire. Remember the four hundred, and there are people who can tell you if you don't know offhand what that is. I worked also, by the way, to try to save the train depot. The business that went in there is no longer around, that's up by the community table, but that's where that train came through. And that rail history is a huge part of Eau Claire, and we should have an, and steam locomotive here in our city that we can look at, and if we can run it, that would be great too. But it belongs here. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Questions?
No? Thank you again.
My name is Mark Whelan. I live at seventy-three sixty-eight Hundred and Tenth Street, Chippewa Falls, in the town of Tilden. And I have a little history that I'll pass around here. There's a couple of pictures of 2719 itself in this book of Sulein trains. Twenty-seven nineteen was a high-speed passenger engine purchased in nineteen twenty-three by the Wisconsin Central and the Minneapolis Saint, Sault Ste. Marie Railroad. And it serviced four trains between Chicago and Minneapolis. Number one and number two were local trains, and they stopped at every station, Stanley, Boyd, Cadott, Colfax, and picked up mail. And mail was a major source of revenue for the railroad. Passengers, back when the roads were dirt, there was a lot of passengers, but as the roads improved, that dropped off, particularly after World War II, when the superhighways and the trucks started to take over. And in around nineteen fifty-three, they lost the mail service to the trucks. And that pretty well did end these trains. However, number one and number two ran daily from Chicago to Minneapolis and back. And then there was a large overnight train that started in Chicago and Minneapolis, started in Chicago and split into three trains. One broke off and went to Ashland, and one broke off at Owen and went to Superior, and the third part of it went on, continued on to Minneapolis. And twenty-seven nineteen serviced the one that broke off at Owen and went into Minneapolis, and then back again on number seventeen, returning to Chicago on a daily basis. So it, it's part of our history. And it really wouldn't, our northwest district would not be what it is without these trains, Cadott, Boyd, they wouldn't exist, Owen, all those towns. And, you know, if you were a state legislator back in eighteen ninety-eight or two thousand and eleven, you wouldn't be able to drive to Madison. You'd have to get on a train and go down there. And my grandfather was a senator, and he took the, the railroad from Mondovi all the way to Madison every time he went down there. As a boy, I grew up in Farnallack, and our garden overlooked the Sulein track near the station there, the depot. And I could see number two taking on water every night and going down to Galloway West and picking up a carload of cream to be distributed to the hotels that night for the following morning. So I've ridden on trains pulled by number twenty-seven seventeen, and I've actually driven a twenty-seven hundred engine. My first job was getting supper from a nearby restaurant for the Sulein operator at the Farnallack Depot. So I think you have a genuine opportunity here that should not be passed up. Our history is important. If we don't remember our history, you know what happens. And I beg you to take advantage of all the effort that Mr. Peterson has put into this, this engine. It's just unbelievable what they did. And it was unbelievable that the state wasn't able to maintain our Altoona roundhouse. That was a tragedy. So I beg of you, if you want to double your money, let the Chippewa Falls buy it for eight dollars, okay? Thank you kindly.
Thank you, sir. Other members of the public here this evening? Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Dorothy Westerman. I live at nine forty-one Violet Avenue, Eau Claire, and I came here to speak in support of returning this steam locomotive to Eau Claire. I, too, believe that the steam locomotive is a huge part of our history, that the steam locomotive opened our country, brought in people from all countries in Europe to populate our, our nation, and that this would be one locomotive that we have here in Eau Claire that we call our own. It lived here, it served here. I think it would be great for the history of our city and our region to have the train here, and I'm not sure that we can afford to put it back into operating condition because it costs a lot of money, but I think that would be great, and if not, to have a static display and, you know, have placards telling about the history of it and, and all the passengers and all of the mail and the freight and the whatever that the steam locomotives have brought to our region and really made Wisconsin grow. So I ask all of you to please pass this resolution to bring Steam Locomotive 2719 back to Eau Claire. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Westerman. Councilmembers have questions? Others here this evening? Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, Vice President Worthman and council members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you this evening. My name is Ken Bueller. I live in Duluth, Minnesota. I am the executive director of the Lake Superior Railroad Museum and general manager of the North Shore Scenic Railroad, and I've held those jobs for about twenty years. Well, I never thought I'd be back here, at least not with a three-year clawback deadline expiring in just about less than thirty days. But let me preface all my remarks this evening by saying thank you. Thank you very much for entrusting us with the legacy care and protection of a valued artifact of American history, the Sulein 2719 steam locomotive. The nineteen twenty-three Elko engine, as you heard, is on the National Register of Historic Places. As a museum, we are very familiar with the responsibilities that come with this esteemed designation of being on the National Register. We are honored to have five other pieces in our collection that are on the National Register, including two locomotives and the beautiful Car Northland, which I had the opportunity to ride on today before I came here. The depot building that houses our collection indoors is itself also on the National Register of Historic Places, so we are very familiar with the duties and responsibilities that come with such an honor. And again, thank you for trusting us to take care of the 2719. We have not let you down. We fully understand the contract we signed has a clawback clause in it that we're discussing this evening, although I would have thought the efforts to reclaim the engine might have started the day we signed the agreement and not waiting till the very end. However, I do understand how deadlines work, and trust me, I have a full desk of them myself, so I understand that. So before we address the actual buyback and what that means, I know that there are four new members of the council who were not here when this agreement was made, so please indulge us and the engine's caretakers for the last twelve years, and the owner of it for three. For twelve years, we have faithfully executed the duties entrusted to us. First, by rescuing the engine from the depths of despair as it sat outdoors uncovered and pretty much forgotten, as Mr. Peterson said. It was considered at the time a public nuisance by the Union Pacific Railway, who were happy to see it move off their property. The engine had been left abandoned outdoors for two winters in the UP rail yard in Altoona. The group that first rescued the engine, that Dave spoke about, did so from an outdoor display, as you know, in Carson Park, where it had been exposed to the elements since the Sulein gave it to the City of Eau Claire in nineteen sixty. Steam engines just don't do well outdoors. The City of Eau Claire was fortunate to have people like Dave Peterson and his group of volunteers concerned enough about the engine to take care of it for you. They did the painting and the cleaning for years, not the city. When the engine was restored to operating condition, I would say that the group involved, the Locomotive and Tower Preservation Fund, did an excellent job of restoration and of operation initially. But that also ended badly, and badly for the 2719. Through no fault of theirs, the world changed, and live steam excursions on mainline railroads ended. Dave is optimistic, they're not coming back. The UP tore up the roundhouse, that should have been a hint to everybody, that they wanted the engine off the property, they're not likely to take it back. We entered into an agreement with the preservation group to bring the engine to Duluth and run it on our more than twenty-eight miles of track along the beautiful shore of Lake Superior and deep into the majestic north woods, which we did. I can tell you that moving the engine from Altoona to Duluth by rail, dead in train, and that's an expression that they use, it's not a derogatory term, that'll never happen again either. It took two vice presidents from the Union Pacific and Canadian National, who have since retired, to both agree to move the engine and avoid a major lawsuit, as I explained to the attorney, between those two railroads over a trackage right agreement that dated back decades and involved two predecessor railroads that didn't even exist at the time we had to move it. This is why, if you bring the engine back to Eau Claire, it's going to cost you a lot of money, much more than the thirty-one thousand dollars that I saw quoted here earlier this evening. And this is where I'd like to make my presentation. The lease of the engine went badly, by the way, for the 2719, when the Locomotive and Tower Preservation Fund ceased to exist. Without bothering to inform us, and with its demise, by the way, went forty-nine thousand dollars that had been given to them for safekeeping. We agreed the money, forty-nine thousand dollars, would be set aside for the engine's eventual rebuilding. That money's gone. Obviously, we stopped paying into that fund once we discovered that the Locomotive and Tower Preservation Group, under the cover of darkness, had folded. So I guess that didn't go well for our museum, but we had undertaken a solemn responsibility. The engine, as you know, is on the National Register of Historic Places, and we're a museum. There was no debate about what needed to be done. So we approached the City of Eau Claire to have the city buy back the engine from the now nonexistent Locomotive and Tower Preservation Fund for an agreed-to price of one dollar and sell it to the museum for two dollars. it to the museum for $2. I remember joking at the time that the city was doubling its money on the engine, which is why the buyback clause in our agreement with you today is $4, so that we could double our money in the eventuality of the clawback would ever be executed. And I think the slight humor in that portion of the partnership agreement that we have for the ongoing protection of the 2719 steam engine suggests that at the time of our contract being signed, nobody ever thought we'd be back here three years later with 30 days left in what I believe to be an anticipation of a legacy agreement. The engine is currently undercover, protected from the elements in a secure setting with alarms, nightly patrols, and indoor exhibition to the public. It regularly is on display in the museum and is fully insured. People see it every day, and last year, a quarter of a million people toured the depot building or rode on our North Shore Scenic Railroad. And if you'll please indulge me, I'd like to brag for just a moment. Last year, USA Today voted the Lake Superior Railroad Museum the best transportation museum in America, not just for trains. We competed against well-known railroad, auto, maritime, and aviation museums across the country. Better Homes and Gardens ranked the North Shore Scenic Railroad as one of the 10 best family-friendly scenic train rides in all of North America. MSN, the web portal used by 3.5 million Microsoft users every single day, listed our Christmas City Express Holiday Train as one of the 10 finest in USA. And CNN listed our Fall Colors Excursions one of the top five in the country. The Lake Superior Railroad Museum is a fully credited member of the American Institute of Museums, the Association of Railroad Museums, and a founding member of the Heritage Rail Alliance. The engine, an historic artifact of great value, is finally in good care, its future finally secure. This follows two sales and one failed effort to preserve it in the past, and now it's in a museum. I'm going to wrap up with two points. The anticipated cost of moving this engine and its eventual care and feeding, and then the extension itself issue will be defined in our agreement with the City of Eau Claire. First, in all honesty, if you can move this engine for $31,000, lock it in and get that price in writing. We all agree that it won't move by rail, as I said, dead in train. That's not going to happen. So you have two choices: truck it, which is very unrealistic, or put it on a specially constructed 200-ton deep-well flat car. You'll need two of them, and then move it. The engine weighs 281,000 pounds. The tender separately weighs another 38,000 pounds. Here's a quote from Viant Crane Company of Superior, Wisconsin. Their firm, we've used to pick up locomotives and cars in the past, so they have some experience in this. The quote, "To pick up the engine and tender here in Duluth, put it on two separate rail cars, and then reverse that process here in Eau Claire is $45,370." And just so you know, that work cannot be done on the museum property. We don't have the facilities, so you'll have to move it first off property to a stable loading area to accommodate the two full-size cranes. The weight of these two pieces includes the using, precludes the using of standard flat cars. What you'll need to do is lease two deep-well, 200-ton, heavy-duty, six-axle, high-wide, and heavy-load transport cars, of which there are very few available. So you'll have to pay extra to have them brought to the museum, then lease them for the duration of the move, and the demurrage on those cars is higher than a regular car, just so you know. And I have quotes from BNSF for those moves. BNSF will move it from our property over to Union Pacific in Superior for $3,000. They estimate that the move on Union Pacific down here would be $20,000. So now we're up to about $70,000. There is a possibility of it being a high-wide and heavy load, which would cost that $20,000 or maybe more. The additional cost is because of the weight of the engine. Most train cars only allow carrying 220,000 pounds. That's the cutoff that rail will allow. Anything over that has to be a heavy and wide load lift. Your engine weighs 281,000 pounds, so there could be some extra charges for that. But anything can be done. Now we have the problem of trucking the engine to its eventual home. Talking to Dave Peterson 20 years ago, that cost him about $20,000 to $22,000 just to move it on the road. And as you know, that involves more cranes to pick it up again, put it on the trucks, and take off again wherever it ends up. And then the road closures, high-wide and heavy-load permits, and accommodations that all have to be secured, but I'm sure you can do that with the right amount of money. You'll certainly have to insure the locomotive for the move. The railroads will require additional insurance, not only of any damage to the engine and tender, but they also, you also have to insure the carrier, because this goes beyond their normal, what they normally do. So you have to insure it for damage to their railroad, their equipment, and their liability. And just so you know, this isn't a property or casualty extension to any insurance you might have. The kind of insurance that you'll need is through a special rail carrier policy. Now, these are standard, you can get them, but they're usually only procured by running railroads such as the North Shore Scenic. So if you can move this for $31,000, and that's a hard number, lock it in. Now, the second point to my conclusion is the contract itself, which I'll wrap up my presentation, and I, of course, thank you all for your patience for doing this. As I said, we are fully aware of our responsibilities and duties as they concern the proper curatorial standards of preserving an historic artifact like the 2719. And we know the clawback clause in the contract is something that we also agreed to. Our Board of Directors feels that the best short-term solution is to grant the extension being requested and give all parties involved the necessary six months to figure out what's best for the locomotive. It's our feeling that none of us really own these pieces of history. We're merely entrusted with their care and preservation for a time. Our efforts in doing so will be measured by our stewardship. Have we passed these important relics of our past onto the next generation in a condition and with the appreciation and understanding of their value that will inspire them and their generation and those that follow to be good stewards going for the future? Under Part 5 of the contract we signed on August of 2015, there are only two hard and fast parts of the agreement. One is that the price is locked in at $4, and the deadline, little over a month from now, to exercise the clawback. What's not in the contract, though, are the agreed-to standards for the artifact's curatorial care going forward. By granting an extension, our attorneys have advised us that what we're really being asked to do is reopen the contract. If that is the desire of the City of Eau Claire to reopen the contract to consider a six-month extension, as opposed to buying the engine back in 30 days, we'll want to negotiate the terms under which an extension would be granted. These concern the curatorial responsibilities of the new owner and are dictated by the organizations we belong to as an accredited museum. You see, what you're stepping into here is the world of museums. Once an artifact is in a museum, going forward, museum standards must be in place, unless, of course, you just decide to exercise the only two points of the contract that are mandated, which is buy it now for $4. We're a museum, and that means something. You know, if the City of Eau Claire, which is not a museum, hired us to build a road in your town, you'd demand that we build it to your specifications and your standards and maintain that road in perpetuity. Once any museum takes possession of an artifact, in order to de-assess it, we have to maintain and follow certain rules that must be followed, or we are no longer a museum. We have a responsibility to the artifact, to our mission as a museum, and to our members and donors that got us here. So for the extension, which we're more than willing to enter into, that's not the issue. Here's, though, what we need to be discussing. The curatorial standards are. The engine must be maintained in a similar or better conditions than we currently have it.
Mr. Bueller, is your, how much lengthier are your notes?
I've got three pages, sir. I can speed it up if you like, or I can end right now.
I think, I think what we're going to do is, because we're talking about curatorial standards, if you can kind of skip past that and maybe just wrap up. We have a number of folks here that still want to speak.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought I was, okay. All right, curatorial standards are important. And there's one other thing that I would like to quote on curatorial standards, and this goes back to the newspaper article in 2013 when we were negotiating to take the engine for perpetual care. It was quoted at the time in the paper that the cost of the building, here we go, the cost of the building would be $135,000 at the time, and that the city administration recommended not going into it because of the cost. So wrapping up, there are hundreds of park engines located around the country that are just sitting in derelict condition because the best intentions weren't backed up by the money or the commitment necessary to maintain them 20, 30, 40, 50 years in the future. But there are 150 working steam engines in all of North America, which this engine is capable of doing again. And of those 150 engines, only a handful are larger and more historically significant than the 2719, because this engine will run again. Its future should be on the rails, doing what she was built to do: pull passenger trains full of friends and families experiencing for themselves what remains of the golden age of railroading. For that to happen, you need a museum. As Indiana Jones said in the opening scenes of The Last Crusade, as he fought for control of the cross of Coronado and the heavy-heaving deck of a steam-tramp freighter in a violent storm, against all odds, he screamed out, "This belongs in a museum." And I've got a few pictures to share. This was the engine when we took it out of Altoona, two years outside in the winter. This was the only protection it had. It was considered a public nuisance. This is how we maintain our engines. This is one we're redoing for a historic display right now. When it's done, this will be the space in the shop where the 2719 will go to be rehabbed for running condition. This is just a static display, taking it down to the boiler, putting on new boiler jackets, painting it, and restoring it. This project took five years. It'll be done this fall, and in its place, we'll go to the 2719 to start the renovation it deserves. We just got done doing the Number 28. That was $750,000. We raised the money. We made the commitment. We're running the engine. We'll do the 2719 again. And there she is, on the North Shore Scenic Railroad, crossing Knife River, crossing the Big Sucker River, going through the majestic north woods, and standing at attention in Lakeside. In summary, thank you for your time. Thank you for the trust you have shown us, and I hope that we have shown our good stewardship in return. The Board of Directors for the Lake Superior Railroad Museum is willing to explore the best possible future for this important artifact with a six-month extension of the contract we have with the City of Eau Claire. But this isn't about us. This is a monument representing the heritage of the generations of people who built the railroads that built our great nation. This isn't about our museum, and it's not about the City of Eau Claire. It's about the 2719 and what's best for this historic artifact.
Thank you, Mr. Bueller. Do council members have questions at this time for Mr. Bueller? No? Thank you again this evening.
Thank you for indulging me. I brought some copies of our Junction magazine, which goes out quarterly. If any of the councillors would like to take that, it kind of tells what we do. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there other members of the public that are here this evening to speak on the 2719? Seeing, oh, welcome. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm John Supan. I live at 1516 Bellevue, and I was the treasurer of the 2719 until, I think, about 2004 during the restoration. Part of the grant money, and I think that this is very important, was given by the United States government with $350,000 so that we'd have a working locomotive to preserve the history of steam locomotives. The other $90,000 or so was raised by the Locomotive and Tower Preservation Fund by community members. And I know how important this was, because my wife and I took posters to every one of the individuals in the city and handed them to them and thanked them for their money. I have mixed feelings tonight about this locomotive. I would, I thoroughly enjoyed it running in the Chippewa Valley. There's nothing more impressive than going 95 miles an hour in a steam locomotive on your way back from Duluth. For train enthusiasts, this is the epitome of satisfaction. The community with a proper plan could possibly have a steam locomotive active in the area, but unfortunately, the Canadian National kind of put a bosh to that. My mixed feelings are, is that I'd love to see it back in Eau Claire, but I don't want to see it back in a park, sitting idle, waiting for somebody to paint it. I would much rather see it by a group or groups that are very concerned about keeping the preservation of steam locomotives. So if you have any questions of me, that's my feelings.
Thank you, Mr. Supan. Does council have any questions? No.
Again.
Welcome to the council, huh? Okay. My name is, again, Dick Hayek. I was the original chief mechanical officer and fellow who basically got a move from Carson Park over to Altoona. And there was an article in the paper, and I called Dave Peterson one Sunday afternoon, got talking to him, went down to Carson Park, learned about the $25,000 asbestos. At that time, I had a good tie-in with BFI, the Eau Claire School District Waste Reclamation, and we did the asbestos removal for $811 from $25,000 with volunteers. And the engine did run, and then the U.P. changed. And as Mr. Peterson says, times change, board of directors change, people change, attitudes change. I think that cycle is coming back again. Now, it's sitting in Duluth, and I went up there about a year after it was there. I didn't see the headlight. I didn't see the bell. It seemed to me the rods were missing or they were cut, couldn't quite get all the way exactly where they had it. So I'm not sure what condition it's in, and I think that needs to be explored before you look at bringing her back. The figure 31,000 to 50,000, that's bandied around, somewhere's in between 40,000 and 42,000, I think, is reality. This money that supposedly disappeared and the LTPNF went down, it wasn't $49,000, it was $68,000. And I went round and round many times with the museum's attorney and whatever else, and the money was shunted aside for restoration. And if it passed the FRA, the money was given to offset any of the costs. Now, where that money is at this point in time is still a question to be learned. Seems to be all kinds of stories, but somewheres, it's out there. And I know the fellow who has the checkbook, so the question just needs to be asked, what happens to it and where it is. But bringing it back, here's the thing that the City of Eau Claire can do. City of Eau Claire exercises the option for $4. They can work with the Duluth Museum under a specific performance contract to restore and have that locomotive up and running, but the city's in control. The city can also turn around and lease that to the 261 group or to other locomotive groups and whatever else on a visitation program across the country. So the city has an opportunity here to cover its costs, not only where it's going to sit static in Eau Claire, and there is a railroad shunt here in town with one of the fairly well-known individuals, and I guess the question is, is if he would make that available on a long-term basis, that would be very interesting. And I have a phone call into him to ask him if he would be interested in pursuing that. I don't have an answer on that. But the city should exercise the $4 option and have control and still be able to work with the Duluth Museum. So there's no way the Duluth Museum should be able to sit here and say, "We need to be in control. We have to," you know, and here's the horror stories. No, the answer is, you can go to them and say, "Okay, well, let's restore and let's see what happens." The picture that was up there with the tarp on it, I remember that, because when it got ready to move, Dave Peterson and I and a couple other guys took those tarps off, and Dave Peterson and I worked out there on a long rainy day one day, and those are heavy tarps and they're not there anymore. So I don't want you to be under the illusion that that tarp stuff is up in Duluth. It's done, gone, finished, down the road. And the Altoona Roundhouse got torn down for whatever reason, and I guess there's no way to berate that, but I don't think you're going to be able to get the engine into the Altoona Yard, to be honestly truthful with you. You're going to have to look for a private individual who has a railroad shunt here in town. There's two people that I'm aware of, and one is a very good railroad buff, so it may occur, it may not. I guess it's just something that has to be explored. But the engine deserves to run, not just it's static, and it can run. And I understand the Duluth Museum not doing anything and just sitting on it for this period of time because of time because as a businessman, why would you put time and energy and expense into doing something if somebody else is going to come along for $4 and take it back? There's no reason to do anything. It deserves to sit there. But the point is, when I went up there, it was covered in ice and snow. It was dirty, didn't see the headlight, didn't see the bell, looked like the compressor was not there. The rod, I'm not sure where it is. They're in possession of a $5,000 Alamoite gun, which today, the last one I saw that sold at an estate sale was $12,000. So if it comes back, we need to make sure it comes back with the materials and tools and things that we gave the museum. So I would like to see exercise the option, and I think there is enough time to talk about this six-month clause. I don't remember all of that specifically, but I do know that if the city of Eau Claire and Duluth wants to work together, you can make it a running engine. But at the same time, the city of Eau Claire can control it and be able to take it to other groups and lease it out and do other things. And I did have a conversation with Kevin Costner about a year ago and whatever. At one time, there was the opportunity to look and run a train out to Deadwood, which is not going to happen at all. Things have changed dramatically in his arena, and my parting comment to him was, "What would be your words of wisdom on this?" And his answer was, "Make smoke, and they will come." And that's exactly true. And I think any of us, I know I fired on it, Dave Peterson fired, he engineered on it, and every time we sat in Altoona and warmed it up and made fire and whatever else, we had lots of people from the public, and we didn't have problems selling tickets. So it doesn't need to be a captive at the Duluth Museum. It can be owned by the city of Eau Claire and leased to Duluth or work with Duluth as well as other engine groups. So I hope you do exercise the $4 option and bring it back.
Thank you, Mr. Hayek. Appreciate it. And there may be questions from council members. No, I don't see any. Thank you, though, again. Other members of the public here to speak on the 2719? Ms. John.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Linda John, Executive Director of Visit Eau Claire, 4319 Jeffers Road. Copies of this letter will be left for you as well, but I'm here tonight to encourage your support of council member Strobel's proposal to bring the Sioux Line 2719 back to the Chippewa Valley. This locomotive has a great deal of historical significance to Eau Claire and many other communities within our region. The Sioux Line 2719 history was eloquently outlined by Chippewa Valley Museum Director Carrie Ronander in her June 19, 2018, Letter of Support to You. Of even more recent history, a group of passionate railroad enthusiasts, as has been referenced tonight, members of the Locomotive Tower Preservation Fund worked tirelessly for several years in the mid-1990s to restore the locomotive to working condition. Visit Eau Claire worked closely with this group as their dream of putting the Sioux Line 2719 back on the tracks was nearing reality. In May 1999, that dream came true, and several weekend excursions took passengers to nearby towns in the Chippewa Valley, fleet of vintage passenger cars pulled by the restored Sioux Line 2719 steam engine. I happen to be one of those lucky passengers. While I'm not suggesting that we have the capacity to put the Sioux Line 2719 back on the tracks at this point, the fact remains that these are stories of our city. These are our stories, and no other destination anywhere in the world owns these stories. The authentic stories of the 2719 will resonate with potential visitors and could be the reason they choose to visit. These stories will capture the interests of journalists who will in turn share them with their readership. Unless we preserve the important artifacts of our stories, we really cannot fully leverage the power that they will have in generating new economic activity. By bringing the Sioux Line 2719 back to the Chippewa Valley, Eau Claire will be making investment in our city's heritage tourism. According to Wisconsin Historical Society, heritage tourism refers to visitors seeking to learn the history of destinations. Heritage tourism visitors tend to visit longer and spend more money than tourists who visit for other reasons. Simply stated, the heritage tourism formula is, save your heritage, share it with visitors, and reap the economic benefits of tourism. Visit Eau Claire is prepared to take an active role in assisting with this important destination development project. We are working on a fundraising campaign that will be launched upon approval of city council member Strobel's proposal to bring the Sioux Line 2719 back to the Chippewa Valley. We also will be discussing a possible funding commitment during our August 2018 Destination Development Committee meeting. We will commit staff resources necessary to serve on and support a task force to determine the transport and final location details of the locomotive as a static display in the Chippewa Valley. Please consider the importance of this project not only as a preservation of our Eau Claire heritage, but also as an economic development investment that will result in new tourism spending impacts for the city of Eau Claire and the Chippewa Valley. Thank you in advance for your consideration of this important initiative, and if you have questions, you can reach me at linda@visitecaule.com. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. John. And does council have any questions at this time? Seeing none, thank you again. Are there other members of the public that are here this evening to speak on this item? Greetings.
I'm William Anderson. I live at 1815 Frisbee Lane in Eau Claire. I'm also the vice chair of the West Central Wisconsin Rail Coalition. And I don't want to mix things up here, but I am in favor of bringing the locomotive back to Eau Claire. I think it's important. I think our town is changing. We all know how much our town is changing. What we've done in the past is in the past, but there will be people that want to do the same things in the future. I have no worry about what happens to that locomotive if it comes here. The other thing I want to say real quickly is, and I don't know if you've seen it in the volume one, the last issue, with the locomotive with the little cheese on the top, we're going to have, we're going to have passenger service between here and St. Paul in the next few years. And I know that a lot of people are naysayers that it could never happen, but Thursday night, Friday morning, we're meeting with the, what's the name of them? The Corridor Capital people from Chicago. This is their fifth trip here. And if I could just very quickly, from Tom Giffey's article, James Costin is the guy that is really heads this partnership with us, with the West Central Wisconsin Rail Coalition. He says, "Nothing we're looking to do here has been done before," said James Costin, chairman of Corridor Capital, a Chicago-based passenger rail development, finance, and management firm that plans to invest in the Eau Claire project. This is a real grassroots effort. We've been meeting with these people for over a year. We think through the real, the real deal, and just be aware, we're going to have passenger service.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Question? Are there other members of the public here this evening? Seeing none, we will close the hearing on that item. Actually, I'll, maybe I'll ask if there's council members who wish to ask further questions of Mr. Graggard or Mr. Strobel, council members Graggard or Strobel. Seeing none, we will close that item. Thank you all for coming this evening and presenting. Before we move on to our last discussion, which is regarding the council vacancy, I would like to recess for a brief five minutes and be back here soon. We're going to be moving to agenda item number three on our public discussion.
Let me just briefly frame the issue and say initially that this is an item for discussion this evening, and then there is a council resolution for possible action on your business agenda tomorrow regarding this. So certainly, council knows, the public knows, there is a vacancy in the office of council president. In the interim, while that vacancy continues to exist, the duties of the president are filled on a temporary basis by the vice president per your city statute, 208040. But long-term, how that vacancy is filled is handled by state law. That vacancy, given that the time that it occurred, just after June, is a position that will come up then for election, by special election, outside of its usual three-year rotation next April. So it's your April 2019 spring election. There will be an election to fill the unexpired term. So at that point, there'll be a one-year, a one-year remaining on what is by local charter ordinance, a three-year term for council president. And then the full term will be up again in April of 2020 on its regular rotation. So those are the, it's kind of the broad outlines that you have that operate by effective state law, that there will be a special election next April. It'll be to fill a one-year vacancy at that point for the position of council president, and then again, it'll be up at its regular rotation the following year in 2020. The council president is a council member, but it is a unique position under your, again, local charter provisions of how you make up the 11-member council. So you have the council president, which stands for election, as I was just talking about, every three years, and is elected by the population at large, the citizens at large within the city. And then you have five district members and five at-large members. So while you are all council members, you each serve within that capacity, and as such, when you, you know, just so you, really, we're just running through that to make sure that both you and the public understand that even though you're all council members, the way that the city has established the council presidency by local charter ordinances, this is not simply a member that, you know, you elect or appoint among yourselves. It is a position that is direct elected by the entire city through a general election. Really, the decision point that's on your agenda then tomorrow is whether and how to fill that position on a temporary basis. So the standards that I've set out, those will happen really regardless, and in the absence of any other decision by council, that's, that's when the general, the special election and then the, the general election for the council president will happen, April of 19 and then April of 20. So your decision point is, do you want to appoint a member to council in that interim between now or whenever you could complete the appointment process and an April 2019 election? The, the process is one you've utilized many times before, just not for the position of council president, but we've utilized it for a number of sitting council members. They've just always been either a district member or an at-large member. So that doesn't mean that that is the process you need to use, but it is the process that we've put in front of you or will be before you tomorrow on your agenda. Dates have been updated, but otherwise, the process is very similar or is really exactly, just with updated dates to the last time we've appointed a member, which I believe was council member Weld prior to when he stood and was reelected for a complete three-year term. So it shows that same process. You could, of course, amend that process. Again, so the first decision point is whether you want to appoint, and then if you want to appoint, you know, that process is yours to discuss, whether you have questions on it now or tomorrow and amend it as you see fit. So again, that's really the outline I have for you, you know, just one last time to summarize. Statutorily, that's when the election will occur, you know, April of 19. Thank you, Vice President Worthman. Let me just briefly frame the issue and say initially that this is an item for discussion this evening, and then there is a council resolution for possible action on your business agenda tomorrow regarding this. So certainly, council knows, the public knows, there is a vacancy in the office of Council President. In the interim, while that vacancy continues to exist, the duties of the president are filled on a temporary basis by the vice president per your city statute, 208-040. But long-term, how that vacancy is filled is handled by state law. That vacancy, given that the time that it occurred just after June, is a position that will come up then for election, by special election, outside of its usual three-year rotation next April. So it's your April 2019 spring election. There will be an election to fill the unexpired term. So at that point, there'll be a one-year remaining on what is by local charter ordinance a three-year term for council president. And then the full term will be up again in April of 2020 on its regular rotation. So those are the broad outlines that you have that operate by effective state law, that there will be a special election next April. It'll be to fill a one-year vacancy at that point for the position of council president, and then again, it'll be up at its regular rotation the following year in 2020. The council president is a council member, but it is a unique position under your, again, local charter provisions of how you make up the 11-member council. So you have the council president, which stands for election, as I was just talking about, every three years, and is elected by the population at large, citizens at large within the city, and then you have five district members and five at-large members. So while you are all council members, you each serve within that capacity, and as such, when you, you know, just so you, really, we're just running through that to make sure that both you and the public understand that even though you're all council members, the way that the city has established the council presidency by local charter ordinances, this is not simply a member that, you know, you elect or appoint among yourselves. It is a position that is direct elected by the entire city through a general election. Really, the decision point that's on your agenda then tomorrow is whether and how to fill that position on a temporary basis. So the standards that I've set out, those will happen really regardless, and in the absence of any other decision by council, that's when the general, the special election and then the general election for the council president will happen, April of 19 and then April of 20. So your decision point is, do you want to appoint a member to council in that interim between now or whenever you could complete the appointment process and an April 2019 election? The process is one you've utilized many times before, just not for the position of council president, but we've utilized it for a number of sitting council members. They've just always been either a district member or an at-large member. So that doesn't mean that that is the process you need to use, but it is the process that we've put in front of you or will be before you tomorrow on your agenda. Dates have been updated, but otherwise, the process is very similar or is really exactly, just with updated dates, to the last time we've appointed a member, which I believe was council member Weld prior to when he stood and was reelected for a complete three-year term. So it shows that same process. You could, of course, amend that process. Again, so the first decision point is whether you want to appoint, and then if you want to appoint, you know, that process is yours to discuss, whether you have questions on it now or tomorrow when amended as you see fit. So again, that's really the outline I have for you, you know, just one last time to summarize. Statutorily, that's when the election will occur, you know, April of 19, full term, April of 20. Your decision, appoint, do you want to appoint someone prior to that to the position of council president, and if so, in what manner would you like to see that done?
Thank you, City Attorney. Nick, are there questions from council regarding this presentation, regarding the process? Councilmember Weld?
Thank you, Council Vice President. Is November an option in regards to the election, and if so, could they serve then the remainder of the full term?
City Attorney?
November is not an option, is the short answer. The provisions in state law say if it is prior to June 1 that the vacancy occurs, then there's the timing to meet a November election. So you have a couple dates that are in the state statute, 1723. If it occurs prior to June 1, you can meet, you know, the taking out of papers, completion of papers, putting on the agenda, putting on the ballot, meeting a primary, should there be any, and then put, for November, then meeting the fall general election. This vacancy occurred after June 1. So then, the next provision of that state law says if prior to December 1, before the next spring election, then the next spring election. So that's the timeframe that you're within. And then, the second question was, you know, could the election then happen for the remainder of the term? Whenever that next election is set for, it is for the remainder of the term. It's just we're in the timeframe of the calendar to push it to next April, at which point it'll be for the remainder of the term, which at that point is one year.
Thank you. Other questions? No? Can have more questions at the end. Are there members of the public who are here this evening to speak on this item?
Good evening. My name is Bruce Rundell. I live at 1623 Edgewood Lane, and I understand that this position of council president is very unique in comparison with other organizations. It would seem to me like it would be appropriate for the current vice chairman to take over the chairman's position, as happens in other organizations. But if that is not the will of the council, it would seem to me then that a council person who has been on the council for a period of time, that understands the issues that have been discussed and previous proceedings, it would make sense to me for that individual then to become chairman. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Are there any follow-up questions? Thank you, Mr. Rundell, for coming down. Any further comments from the public this evening? Seeing none, does council have further questions? Councilmember Christopherson?
The suggestion that maybe someone with experience might move into the appointed position, then how that would still leave the council at 10 members, and I'm wondering how the election, then are you electing two persons in April? How would that work if that were the case? Mr. Nick?
City Attorney?
Thanks. Yes, good question, and possibly so. It would depend when the first vacancy or your present vacancy of council president was filled. So assuming council would act to fill that vacancy before December 1, and if it was filled with a present sitting council member, then that would create a new vacancy of that person's former position, whether at-large or district, and if prior to December 1, then that position would also be filled on an interim basis at the spring 19 election. So we just had... Yep, spring of 19, your next spring election. So we just had district elections, so next spring of 19 is at-large. So if it would happen to be an at-large position, then the term would be up, but you'd be, so you'd run through the same vacancy provisions on the next position. Either they would be up for a full three-year, or if they weren't, it would be an election to fill the unexpired term, and then you'd also face the same potential, you know, whether you'd want to fill that other new vacancy.
Thank you. Further questions? Seeing none, this meeting of the Eau Claire City Council is adjourned.
The Eau Claire City Council meeting will return in a moment. Newsworks is made possible by continuing community support. If you would like to volunteer or make a donation, please contact us via phone at 715-839-5067 or online at valleymediaworks.org. This program is simulcast on WRFPLP 101.9 FM. We now return you to the Eau Claire City Council meeting.
Has come to order, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
Beaton.
Here.
Bergy.
Here.
Christopherson.
Here.
Emmanuel.
Gregert.
Here.
Strobel.
Here.
Weld.
Here.
Worthman.
Here.
Sean.
Thank you, and appreciate City Clerk calling the roll. Welcome everyone to our June 26 legislative session of the Eau Claire City Council. We welcome everyone here tonight, and would like to alert you that Valley Media Works is also live streaming these proceedings for folks who cannot attend in person. That can be found at valleymediaworks.org. We will now move on to our first order of business, which is the consent agenda. Are there any questions, comments from council members, or would anyone like to remove an item for separate consideration? Seeing none, on a motion then by councilmember Strobel, seconded by councilmember Anderson, the consent agenda has been moved. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll. Sorry.
Councilmember Anderson.
Aye.
Beaton.
Aye.
Bergy.
Aye.
Christopherson.
Aye.
Gregert.
Aye.
Strobel.
Aye.
Weld.
Aye.
Worthman.
Aye.
And that item has passed. Consent agenda has passed. I now have a proclamation I would like to read and also a presentation commending council members, past council members for their service. If Ms. Comptee and the Parks and Recreation team could meet me at the podium, I'd appreciate it.
Look familiar? Could've been you.
Welcome. Thank you for coming down. So I'll first just read a few words of our proclamation, and then turn it over to Ms. Comptee and all of you to share a little bit more about this. So to begin with, whereas Parks and Recreation programs are an integral part of the communities throughout this country, including in the city of Eau Claire, and whereas our Parks and Recreation is vitally important to establishing and maintaining the quality of life in our community, ensuring the health of all of our citizens, contributing to the economic and environmental well-being of our community and region, and whereas Parks Recreation programs build healthy, active communities that aid in the prevention of chronic disease, provide therapeutic recreation services for those who mentally or physically disabled, and also improve the mental and emotional health of all citizens, and whereas Parks and Natural Recreation areas improve our water quality, protect our groundwater, prevent flooding, improve the quality of the air we breathe, provide vegetative buffers to development and protective habitat for wildlife, and whereas our Parks and Natural Recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community, which we all appreciate, and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and to recreate outdoors. Now, therefore, I, Andrew Worthman, Vice President of the Eau Claire City Council, on behalf of our entire city council, do hereby proclaim the month of July as Parks and Recreation Month. Thank you for coming.
Okay. First, I'd like to introduce our entire team. I know that we have some new council members, and I appreciate you guys wearing the hats and glasses we've provided to help celebrate July's Parks and Recreation Month. So we'll start with introductions. My name is Dawn Comptee. I'm the Recreation Manager for the city of Eau Claire.
Chad Durkop, Program Facility Supervisor.
Carrie Autumn, Recreation Program Supervisor.
Todd Quala, Community Services Manager on the Maintenance Division.
Tru Wang, Program Supervisor.
Julie Booth, Program Supervisor.
And then this is Fairfax Max. His home is Fairfax Pool. That's our mascot. He decided, thought this was important enough to join us.
And Jeff Pipinger, Community Services Director. Our Parks and Recreation are a fun division, so you can see how much fun they bring to the crowd here. So, and they're very passionate about what they do.
Well, we certainly try. I heard coming in Dale tell some, someone that we are very serious about our fun, and we are. But we are also very serious about our services we provide, the facilities we maintain, and the programs that are being enjoyed right now by many people in the community. Just normally, on an average year, we have about 3,500 to 4,000 registrations, just youth alone. This year, we're over 5,300 already. So it's incredible. We've partnered with the school district, which has certainly helped enhance that, our summer programming, and we see that continuing to grow and be well-attended. So if you're out there, you'll see a lot of things happening in the community. Last week, Thursday, we went out into the community and took pictures. Our crew took pictures, our staff took pictures, and our community, what is Tess's social media? Social media specialist. She goes out in the community taking pictures, but it was incredible to see how many youth were participating, but even Marcel, how many adults were being active in our parks. I don't have pictures of that because that's coming later, but I did want to share a little video of what we saw last week with you. Okay, hopefully it works. Okay, so that really did all happen last week and a whole lot more. So it is absolutely incredible. But we're here to promote July's Parks and Recreation Month. That is a national campaign by National Recreation Park Association. In front of you, you have, let's see if I can do this. You have a little invitation of some of the events that are happening and being put on by Eau Claire Parks and Recreation. You also can enjoy our trails. There's many free things to do in our community. We have community gardens. We have concerts in the park that were facilitated by us but put on by others. There's so much going on in this community now. It's a really great place to live and fun place to have a family. So again, thank you for your support and enjoy our events this summer.
I can now invite council members, former council members, Clint Hammer, former council member, Bob Van Heden, and his family as well, and anyone to the podium, please, please join me up here. Okay, you can both come up. Thank you both for coming down this evening, and it is my real honor at this time to present each of you with an award for your service, for your dedication, for your time spent doing the hard work of bettering our community. Folks in our community look to their city council, to their local government, to provide the services that touch our lives on a daily basis, whether that's uplifting neighborhoods, whether that's clean water, safe roads, good paying jobs, but they also look to us to be leaders and to help set a vision for what our community can be, for what our community strives to be. There is no doubt in my mind that each of you brought that spirit and vision into your service, that you worked hard to meet the high expectations of those you served, and that you helped lead our community into a new era. For that, we are all indebted and incredibly thankful. I would now like to present each of you with a plaque to signify not only that our entire city council thanks you, that our city staff thanks you, that our city as a whole thanks you. I'll be presenting each of these plaques in order of years served, so the longest-serving will come last. And I'd like to say, I'd like to say first a few words before giving each of you a plaque, and if you'd like to say a few words to address the council and folks at home tonight and here in the audience, please do. For those not able to make it here this evening, these plaques will be mailed as soon as possible to your residents this week. First, to Mr. Tim Tiwol. Year in, year out... To Mr. Tiwol. Year in and year out, you raise the difficult questions around budgeting. How are our public dollars being spent, and where could we realize more efficiencies? Your quips pleasantly caught us off-guard on many occasions, and your tenacity for a deeper dive into policymaking, contract language, and process served our council well. Thank you for your service. To Ms. Kathy Mitchell. You are an inspirational leader to so many, and your service in our community has not been, and I expect will not be, exclusive to your time on city council. From the Board of Health to the Plan Commission, to the city council, to Neighborhood Association, and now as Just Local Foods Board, on Just Local Foods Board, you have shown time and again that thoughtful, selfless dedication to those in your community truly lifts everyone up. Thank you for your service. For Mr. Clint Hammer. Whether during sensitive negotiations or tense deliberation, your... Whether during sensitive negotiations or tense deliberation, your measured words and actions helped our city council better stand all sides of an issue. You helped make us all better leaders. Folks on the south side always knew they had you in their corner, and for that, they are thankful and we are all thankful. Thank you for your service. To Mr. Bob Von Heden. Your years of financial expertise on our council will be missed. And what annual budget session would be complete without reminding us all about debt fund? Through your years of service to your district, you set the bar incredibly high for anyone, not only those willing or looking to fill your shoes, but anyone looking to fill a district seat. I'd also like to personally thank you for your inspiration and support as I learned the ropes as a young council member almost 10 years ago. I want to thank you for that. Appreciate it. To Ms. Carrie Kincaid. There is no doubt in my mind that our city took huge strides because of your leadership, because of your vision, and because of your incredible hard work and dedication. From the revitalization of our downtown, to the farmer's market, to the Confluence Project, to the Public Spirit Fund, and so much more, our community has turned a corner, and your inspiration and leadership helped make all of it possible. Thank you for your service. Just a few closing remarks, and then I'll let both of you speak. Thank you again to all of you, and please know that our doors are always open at city council. Your insights, your reflections, your guidance is always welcome, because it takes all of us to ensure our community lives up to its highest ideals and that we serve everyone in their quest for a better life. Thank you again.
Thank you, President Worthman. I appreciate your kind words. I feel that I should be giving the city an award or a plaque. Although it was very satisfying to have served on the council during a time of great, exciting growth, I feel that the process and the experience that I had on the council benefited me much more than I benefited the city. But I'm glad some people think I did. But as much as I miss serving on the council, I have not had one minute's difficulty adjusting to a life of full retirement. And of all the things that I feel I was blessed with, the one I value probably more than any is the appreciation and the understanding and the knowledge that I gained about the quality of city that we have. Our senior staff, from the city manager on down, and I served with three of them. We have a wonderful city, and I truly hope that each of you have the same sense of satisfaction when you finish your terms as I have right now. Thank you very much. Tough act to follow. But anyhow, I want to thank the citizens of Eau Claire, and especially the voters of District Four, whom I had the honor of representing over the past 15 years. When working with Wifley, my job as a certified publicist was to serve the client. When serving on the city council, it was my pleasure to provide assistance to the district citizens and to the others across the city as they asked for my help. Many wonderful things were accomplished in District Four. Making Half Moon Lake swimable again, and saving the beach. It's closed right now because of bacteria, but at least it's making progress. We can now see the bottom of the lake where before we couldn't. Restoring Robin Gun Park, expanding Hope Gospel Mission in the Men and Women Centers, solving neighborhood conflicts, reducing truck traffic, traffic calming, creating the County Farm, West Ridge Village, and the Jeffers Road Neighborhood Parks, along with the Miracle Field. Our young feller over here on the end spent a lot of time working hard on Jeffers Road Project. But all of those things is what makes our community great, because what it's all about, we saw this earlier with our young people as they came forward, it's what it is. It's for the children of the community, and we have to continue providing for them. Other things, we saved the historical section office in Lakeview Cemetery, remodeled it, enhancing the entrance gate, plus promoting the Angel Garden. Some citywide accomplishments which are kind of interesting, this goes way back, but passing the smoking ban, which created a little bit of interesting things, with Andrew blocking the frac sand company at the loading station. Some of the other things that were just part of the process of this is renovating Hastingsway, construction the new Carson Park causeway. Again, our interest to these parks are what it's all about. And of course, with Mr. Pipinger's help, building a new efficient wastewater treatment plant, and of course, expanding our bike pedestrian trails, as Jeremy really appreciates. Providing incentives for the industrial centers to attract and retain business at paid living wage, ensuring the city would not be liable for the operating deficits of the Pablo Art Center, at least in the first few years. If there are any deficits, we're hoping there won't be, but if there are, at least now, there is some protection for the citizens. And this one goes way back, even before council time. Twenty-one of us citizens encouraged RCU to construct their building behind River View Terrace. We took a lot of flak because everybody said we were opposing RCU. We weren't. We were opposing the location of the building. Once we got through to him, we met with his architect, and the architect said, "It should be behind the building." We want to protect the park area and the space from the road to the confluence of the Chippewa and the Eau Claire Rivers. And it turned out to be very good. It's one of our showcase places. A couple other items, saving some historical buildings. Our little friend over here, Mr. Strobel, loves his buildings. But anyhow, the Olsen's Livery and the Pioneer Furniture Company, one became a restaurant, and the other is the children's theaters using. Then a few of the things, updating Carson Parks, the Hobbs Ice Center, and Fairfax Pool. All of these things, again, primarily for the community, but a lot more for the children. Knowing about the past saves us from repeating mistakes and teaches us how to prepare for the future. I am honored to have served on many different city councils, plus worked with many different city managers and their staff, and who helped and directed us. Without their assistance, we on the council would not be able to do the things. So today, I say thank you, Mr. Peters, and to your staff, for assisting our council in the accomplishments we have made, to make the City of Eau Claire a greater place to live, work, and as Mr. Peter says, have fun in.
regarding special events. This item, Resolution 19, authorizes Juggernaut's softball team to conduct the Taylor Ann Thompson Memorial Softball Tournament, which is on July 6th through 8th, 2018, at Carson Park. Mr. Pipinger is here with details.
Good afternoon. Another fun event coming to the City of Eau Claire. The special event application before you is a new event. The Taylor Ann Thompson Memorial Softball Tournament donates a portion of their proceeds to St. Jude's Children's Hospital for childhood cancer. This year's event will occur on July 6th through the 8th, and will take place at Carson Park on the Goline and Hobbs softball fields. The event is expected to bring in about 40 teams for this tournament. City council approval is needed due to alcohol being served past sunset. This special event was recommended for approval by the Special Events Committee at their June 6th meeting. Mr. Tim Garbers is here to answer any of your questions, and as always, I'll be happy to answer any questions also.
Thank you so much. Are there council questions on this item? Seeing none. Thank you. Then on a motion by Councilmember Weld, seconded by Councilmember Beaton, item number 21 has been moved. Discussions are in order. Seeing none, please call the roll.
Councilmember Beaton?
Aye.
Bergy?
Aye.
Christopherson?
Aye.
Gregert?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
And that resolution passes. Moving on to item number 20, which is a Haymarket Plaza Resolution Awarding Contract for Procurement, number 201834, of the Haymarket Plaza construction. Because this item is a budget amendment, it's going to require a two-thirds vote of the elected members, or eight affirmative votes are required for adoption. Mr. Solberg.
Good afternoon. This resolution does a number of things. The first that it does is it awards the final contract necessary for the construction of Haymarket Plaza. It awards all of the features that we have been talking about for a number of years, with the fountains, the outdoor seating, lawn areas, fire features, concrete paving, as well as landscaping. It also does include reappropriations. Our river, the wall that is under construction currently encountered some poorer soil conditions than we had anticipated. So with that portion of the overall construction, it was necessary to have a $480,000 reappropriation from the Canary Trail, which came in well under budget to pay for the Riverwalk portion of the plaza, which lies along the river. And then the remaining portion of the resolution is a $250,000 transfer that would serve as a contingency for this. So if we encounter anything unknown, that would cover any unforeseen changes in conditions. It's not anticipated that it will be spent, but it's there if we need it. Along with the plaza, since we've started, we wanted to have it be an artful place, full of art. We've shown in our renderings a number of art pieces along the edge. Worked with the city's Public Arts Council for help in the plaza. And we've also included a number of what we're calling fronds or light sticks. Those were included in the bid. They came in at about $148,000 for the fronds. And working with the Art Council, we're proposing to, excuse me, we're proposing to have a $100,000 grant for placing public art in the plaza, rather than contract and award the light sculptures that we had shown in our renderings. So we wanted to get an idea of how much they cost. It ended up being that we were proposing to make funds available, either in wholly or to be leveraged for additional funds, to place art in the plaza upon completion of the construction of the hardscape and to kind of set the palette for that. So if approved tonight, construction can start as early as early July. We're hoping to have everything wrapped up in October of this year. That'll take any questions.
Does the council have any questions? Councilmember Strobel?
Thank you. Mr. Solberg, a couple of questions for you. I heard that that wall came in a lot more than budgeted, and I think you just maybe told us how much more. How does that work when someone bids a job? Is it contingent on soil conditions, or wouldn't that be something they would investigate prior to giving us a price on that?
With the wall, we went into the wall assuming that, and we had the budget set for the wall that would end up holding the Riverwalk up. We could construct the plaza without the wall. It would just preclude the Riverwalk because we would have a slope coming up. We were going into it assuming that we would be able to construct this wall similar to the walls in Phoenix Park and the wall on First Avenue that's along the river. That's on a footing, and it didn't have any piling underneath it. So our estimate for the actual concrete part of the wall and the cap that's on top of the pile was about what we were thinking. The wall, the design for the wall, when we had the soils that came in, ended up almost five mile of piling that were required for underneath it, about 25,000 feet of piling. And that is what caused the overrun. We worked with a contractor and awarded an alternate bid that saved some money off of the original design, but there's still, the poor soil conditions that were encountered by the theater and by the Haymarket Landing Building ended up catching up with us here. We were just fortunate that we had money budgeted for the Canary Trail, anticipating similar things. We didn't encounter it over there. So that's why it came in. That was about a million-dollar difference in the wall for that. And we ended up, if we would have had the soils that we had anticipated, we'd have been about a half a million under on everything, instead of requiring that budgetary realotment.
Okay, thank you. And could I do a follow-up question?
Sure.
My second question would be, where on the plaza are the lights done?
So they're not shown on the renderings, but we have, on the portion of the Riverwalk that was constructed along the Haymarket Landing Building, about every 75 feet along the rail, there are blisters that are on the outside of the rail on top of the wall, and those have the shepherd hook lights that you see on the trails. And then throughout the plaza, so that's the trail lighting that will light the Riverwalk. The buildings have exterior lighting for those, and then these, they're vertical, almost, they're like a decorative bollard-type lighting that provides a softer downlighting in between the better-lit trail. And you can see them by the shadows in the renderings here. And those just offer supplemental lighting. All of the lights are able to be dimmed and kind of raised to a higher level if you need better light or lowered if there's an event. And then the bid, some of the alternates in the bid include lights in the lawn area that would come on that would replicate some of the lights that you see in the theater. So it ties the horizontal surface with the vertical surface.
Councilmember Beaton?
Thank you. Last time you were before us with the plans for the plaza, I had asked about bike parking, strategic bike parking. Has that been sorted at all?
We have, included in the alternates, we have some bike racks that are considered art that are in here. We also have areas identified around the bridge, so if you come across the bridge, you can dismount. We're working with Exel Energy and our control cabinets that we need to power the electrical for the plaza, the fountains, and then the gas. And the remaining space in this area will have bike racks, and we're also looking at trying to fit in over in this corner here, some additional bike racks. So the exact number is unknown, but we're probably in the 30 to 40 bike rack range that we have at our first try for this.
Great. Thanks for working on it.
Thank you. Further questions? Councilmember Gregor?
Thank you, Council Vice President Worthman. And Mr. Solberg, I really appreciate where this is going here, although obviously the costs are kind of unfortunate here. I guess what I was wondering about was what exactly poor soil conditions means, and what exactly the soil conditions that you were expecting to find or hoping to find?
Well, basically, what you have is you have river sand underneath. You have a layer of wood sawdust, yellow, and then you have some sand that's been brought in over the years on top. And what we were hoping was that you could build a wall in the sands on top. And what we were hoping was that you could build a wall in the sands on top, spread it out wide enough, have your additional fill, because all of the fill out here is going to be ten feet taller, build it on top without disturbing that kind of softer surface in there. After you go through with the additional weight on it and did the analysis on it, you'd basically be squeezing that layer of mush out. The fill that's going behind here would be too much for that layer to support. And then what would happen is it would squeeze out, and the wall would, the bottom of the wall would tip out and it would collapse on itself. So the piling goes underneath it and anchors everything above and supports the weight above that softer surface, so it doesn't happen. And we were anticipating on First Avenue, there was enough, that layer along First Avenue by the courthouse was a lot smaller than what we have here.
Councilmember Strobel?
I just wanted to maybe answer Councilmember Beaton's question about the bike racks. I missed the South Barstow bid meeting, but it was my understanding that they donated three to five thousand dollars worth of bike racks, and I thought it was for the plaza.
Okay.
So just a shout-out for the South Barstow bid.
Further questions or comments, well, questions? Seeing none, thank you, Mr. Strobel. Then on a motion by Councilmember Gregor, seconded by Councilmember Bergy, this item has been moved. Discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Bergy?
Aye.
Christopherson?
Aye.
Gregert?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
And that resolution passes. We are on to item number twenty-one, which is resolution regarding Hoyum Acres Seventh Edition. This resolution would approve the amended final plat for Hoyum Acres Seventh Edition, located at the southwest corner of Preston Road and Frank Street. Mr. Scott Allen is here this evening to discuss.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President, and members of the council. Good before this evening is a request from Everyday Surveying and Engineering on behalf of Hoyum Family Trust to final plat fifteen lots, zoned R1, single-family residential, approximately in this location here. It's between Clermont Interstate, Cameron to the south, in this general area on the west side of town. This was actually before you twice previously, back in June of last year, and then again as an amendment in November of this last year. The applicant is now back once more to essentially amend it back to that original June layout and configuration for the most part. Again, it is, the last amendment had added approximately four lots. Now those are being removed from the south end of the project, back to its original, for the most part, again, configuration. Fourteen lots plus a fifteenth with the existing house already in place. This is Hoyum Lane. The plat, as you saw here, shows that it's South Hoyum Lane. Staff has recommended that south designation be removed, so it's a continuation of Hoyum Lane from the north. Show the aerial photo, general vicinity here. The red line, if you can see that, that's not terribly clear, that's the corporate boundaries, City of Eau Claire. And again, here's existing Hoyum Lane, which would extend down and create fourteen lots plus a fifteenth with existing residents. So with that, I will stand for any questions. And following this item, Engineering Department has development agreement item for your consideration as well. So again, I'll stand for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? No? Thank you, Mr. Allen. Then on a motion by Councilmember Christopherson, seconded by Councilmember Strobel, item twenty-one has been moved and discussion is in order. Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Christopherson?
Aye.
Gregert?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Bergy?
Aye.
And that resolution passes. Item number twenty-two is resolution authorizing the city manager to amend the development agreement with the Hoyum Family Partnership LLC for street and utility improvements within the plat of Hoyum Acres Seventh Edition. Mr. Jenzko.
Thank you. This amendment returns the development agreement back to what was originally adopted for the original alignment of the plat by removing the extension of Hoyum Lane, removing the clauses for the reimbursement on the east side of that extension. It does retain the reimbursements for the parcels in the town on the east side of Preston Road, and it does retain the reimbursement for a short section of water line to complete the looping that wouldn't have been necessary for this development. It returns the sidewalks to the resolution that was adopted by the City Council last April, a year ago, and it removes the sidewalk on what was the extension. The other change that it makes, actually, to the original agreement, though, was that the temporary cul-de-sac in Hoyum Lane was going to be on the adjacent property. That agreement did not happen, so now the plan is to put the temporary cul-de-sac within the plat by extending into the outlot that was designated for the stormwater facility. That required that outlot to be a little bit bigger so they could keep the same volume, which then moved the property lineup, and they actually lost the lot because of that. So that's the amendment in a nutshell. Basically, it's returning the agreement to the original agreement.
Thank you. Any questions? Seeing none. Appreciate it, Mr. Jenzko. This item is going to be moved by Councilmembers Weld and Councilmember Beaton. Discussion is in order. Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Gregert?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Bergy?
Aye.
Christopherson?
Aye.
And that passes. Resolution number twenty-three is resolution amending the City of Eau Claire's schedule of fees and licenses by establishing low-income transit fares. Because, again, this item is amending the budget, two-thirds vote of the elected members are affirmative, of eight votes is required for its adoption. Mr. Winzens, we won't have a presentation, we've kind of gone over this issue a number of times. So if there's any additional questions, I suppose you could ask them this evening. But seeing none, this item will be moved by Councilmember Gregor and Councilmember Bergy and is up for discussion.
Thank you, Council Vice President Worthman. Yeah, I, you know, this resolution is obviously, you know, coming upon us after quite a bit of work and after the fares were increased for our Eau Claire Transit System starting January one. I feel that, I do have a question that comes up as we kind of figure out some of the details, however. Basically, the proposal is to, just so the public can follow it here, since we're not reintroducing the details, is to reduce the, basically create a new fare for bus riders who are experiencing low income and to have an option to get monthly bus passes at forty-five dollars instead of fifty dollars, starting July one, and then be able to have a cash fare at a dollar fifty instead of a dollar seventy-five. And I guess my question is, is I've been in some dialogue with other council members and staff, and I'm a little bit unclear exactly how we're going to implement the determination of certifying someone as qualifying and how exactly that person would carry out what they need to do to get that reduced fare pass. So I'm not sure if Mr. Winzens could explain the plan ahead of us if we were to pass this resolution. I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Mr. Winzens?
Thank you, Council Vice President. I don't have every detail of the implementation plan. Tom Wagner, our Transit Director, has been working most directly on that. However, with that being said, one of the reasons that we established the level at which, the income level at which persons would qualify for the reduced fare at a hundred-and-eighty-five percent of the poverty level is it's the same level used, same income level used in a number of other programs, such as Badger Care, such as WIC, such as free and reduced school lunch program. So one of the things that we wanted to do was partner with those agencies so that if an individual or family has been determined eligible for one of those programs, those agency would certify or could certify that those individuals were eligible for the reduced transit fare. So, you know, simply, if somebody qualifies for one of those programs, they could take a form to that agency, we could email a form to that agency, and they could certify that that individual or family qualifies for the reduced fare. Similarly, if they have a card, a Badger Care card, by coming into the Transit Office and showing the person that card, they would qualify for the reduced fare program. As far as, that would really allow them to get the monthly pass, but it would also allow them to get a card from the Transit System that would allow them to show that card to the driver, and then the driver would know that they qualified for the reduced fare daily pass as well. So if they were just riding the bus on a daily basis and weren't paying for the monthly fare, it would take care of that. Absent the individual or family qualifying for any of those other programs, you know, we'll go through a process of reviewing their, you know, their paycheck stub or a tax return or, you know, some other means of us verifying that they do indeed meet that income threshold to qualify for the reduced fare.
Thank you. Councilmember Gregor?
Yeah, I, so I appreciate having that. I think you already had explained that in the past, or at least as a vision for how it would be done. I think it just helps to have that in front of us again here. So just to clarify, if someone is coming to the Transit Office, for example, to, and they don't have a verification that is from another agency like WIC, for example, they could bring in other documents that would, like pay stubs?
Absolutely.
Okay. And would that also be a situation where they could, I guess that's, I guess that was my main question. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there further questions, further comments from council? Amendments? Councilmember Beaton?
Sorry, couldn't see it.
Councilmember Gregor?
Thank you, Vice President Worthman. I do have an amendment that would kind of help to make sure we're making this reduced fare option as accessible as possible and to be able to, in fact, have people be able to self-certify their income status if they, for example, do not have documentation that is from another agency or that maybe they're lacking at the particular moment a pay stub or something like that. Because I feel that there are definitely situations that people are in that they cannot qualify for these programs, but they certainly would, their lives would be improved markedly if they had access to them. And maybe someone that just moved to the community, it may be, it may be someone who just, the circumstances are such that they just don't, they just cannot navigate the system that requires, that would be required in order to receive this benefit. And while the proposal today is a relatively modest reduction in the cost, in the price of a pass for someone experiencing low income, it's a step that we're taking, and I think we should find a way to open it up to as many people as possible who need it. So I'm going to pass out some language for this. So this would be amending the resolution and adding an additional, now therefore be it further resolved clause at the end that reads, "Now therefore be it further resolved by the City Council of the City of Eau Claire that people experiencing low incomes be allowed to self-certify their income status for the purpose of qualifying for the low-income transit fare." So I can pass out copies so that folks have that in front of them.
Thank you.
And then I can also, yeah, if perhaps Ms. Moreau would also be able to put it up on the, or if a staff member would be able to put it up on the screen, too, so that the public may see it, would be appreciated.
Is there a second for that motion?
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilmember Beaton. I'll let Mr. Gregor, if you have any further words, Councilmember Gregor, if you have any further words. You sort of already explained the amendment, but if you have any further words before we open it up to other members.
Yeah, I feel, you know, part of this is that this was going to come to us, there was an intent to have this amendment come to us from Councilmember Emanuel, but it couldn't be here today. So, and I had agreed to second it, so therefore it comes to me to bring this forward at this point. So I appreciate having a second on top of that to be able to have the discussion and appreciate anyone's feedback or thoughts. And if the staff has any further thoughts about how it could fit into the implementation, that would be welcome, too.
Thoughts, Councilmember Beaton?
Thank you. I appreciate this amendment being brought forward, and I appreciate the initial initiative by Councilmember Weld to create a low-income fare. I'm excited to see this amendment come forward, though, because, you know, as somebody who has tried to navigate programs like Food Share or other social services programs like that, I really understand how challenging it can be to access those programs sometimes and how the stigma that it can be felt from accessing those programs. And as somebody who has worked professionally to encourage people to sign up for those programs, I know that there are a lot of people out there who need assistance like Food Share or WIC or a lower-income transit fare who don't make use of that service for whatever reason. Either they don't know about it, or they can't access it, or they're, you know, they have negative feelings towards it. And so I think that this is, this lower-income transit fare is something that we can provide to citizens regardless of whether they're formally taking use of state or federal programs. I also have concerns that I've raised before, that the, that I've heard that the Transit System can be quite challenging to navigate to begin with, to find access for a monthly pass or something like that, rather beyond just giving coins or giving money to the bus driver upon entering the bus. And so I think that this could be a way to make this step a little bit easier for people, rather than going to their social services agency and then going to the Transit Office or finding their card or bringing a pay stub. I think this could make this step a little bit easier. And then finally, from what we've heard from Mr. Winzens, it sounds like this, these steps could be quite an administrative workload. And so to have folks self-certifying that they're in need of a low-income trend- And so, to have folks self-certifying that they're in need of a low-income transit fare, I think that we could reduce very valuable staff time, that we're always hearing is limited. So, I'm excited to be supporting this, and hope that my fellow councilmembers can as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Beaton. Further thoughts? Councilmember Weld?
Question from Mr. Winsans, if that's possible.
Yeah.
Obviously, the agenda, thank you for coming up, Mr. Winsan. The agenda item is a budget adjustment? Does this amendment change our budget adjustment?
No, I can't say that it does. We, I have no way of knowing how many additional people may qualify for the reduced fare with the ability to self-certify versus those who would have qualified if the proposed certification processes were in place. So, I think that it would be negligible at best.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Further comments? Councilmember McGregor?
Thank you, Council Vice President. I, yeah, I feel like, I mean, that's pretty good, I guess, the reasoning, one of the reasons to kind of experiment with this right now is that this is a pretty modest decrease in the fare structure for this new option for folks. And so I think this is the time to, so if there are, you know, ideas like this out there, that this conversation, in fact, has been going on for a few months, in terms of like what other cities have been able to do to make this option more accessible, and also just working through some of the details. I saw some emails going back with, into February, with Councilmember Emanuel having started to explore this. So I feel like this is our, this is a good chance to see how it goes, and then we can, then we will be informed for our further discussions and further consideration as potentially part of the 2019 fee and license schedule and city budget. So, so that's a bit of a pitch for doing this now.
Councilmember Weld?
Thank you, Council Vice President. You know, obviously, we're still achieving the goal that we started with, and if the staff feels comfortable that it's not changing, you know, our budgeting and having to find more funds, and more importantly, delaying it another month to do another feasibility study, or to look at what this means in the end. I guess, you know, I can support the intent and the spirit of it. I just, I guess I've never seen a resolution poked and prodded so much over the last seven months, and I wish that we could just agree on getting it started and then move from there. The whole idea was, you know, again, this was going to at least start the conversation and look at new ideas for 2019. I still feel like we need to sit down together as a collective body and discuss all our transit issues at one time, rather than each month coming back with something new. Not that they're not good ideas. I mean, we heard another one last night in regards to our veterans, and, you know, two weeks ago, we're talking about K through 12, and there's a lot of needs, obviously, in our community, and a lot of needs in regards to our transit. But I think doing it, you know, just one thing at a time, and constantly altering and changing, and coming back and forth, and then delaying this, you know, continually is not, you know, achieving what we set out to do. So, you know, I guess I'd like to see us kind of as a collective body, agree that let's talk about this as one big package, and stop continuing to try and do it little by little, because I think it's a demand on staff and the community to keep up with all these changes. So, assuming there are no other amendments, I will support the one that's been presented.
Thank you, Councilmember Weld. Councilmember Strobel?
Thank you. I think I supported the reduction and the $7,000 transfer the last time through, and I would support that again. If this is a trial, as Councilmember Gregor says it is, I don't have a problem supporting it right now.
Further discussion? Councilmember Bergy?
Thank you, Vice President. I agree with Councilmember Weld that I think to have a big discussion about what all our needs are, because I also have ideas for transit that I've heard from my constituents that I would love to talk about as a body. So, I think that's a fantastic idea, so thanks for bringing that up. I also think that this amendment could really save staff time and energy and money there, so I think that's a great idea. And I think reduce stigma, which is a very real thing in our community or all over, so I think that's always a good thing. It increases accessibility, too. I do have a question. That's okay. But so it would, the process would be someone would show up in the Transit Office and then say, "I would like to qualify for the low-income or reduced fare," and then they would, give them a card, or is that what you're thinking?
Councilmember McGregor?
Thank you, Council Vice President. I believe that some of those details do come down to some of the staff, you know, considerations that they'll have to make, but there's a number of different places where someone can buy a pass, of course. It's not just the Transit Office, but there, I guess I would envision a way for someone to self-certify by, that they, at the point at which they could either get the monthly pass, or get the card that allows them a reduced cash fare, to be able to basically verbally allow that. But it could be a staff decision to have some other form of self-certification. And it could also be, you know, where we, you know, I'm not sure if the plan would be that we would act, like, basically, the 185% of poverty is the standard that we're setting, and how do we, how exactly we communicate that is part of the deal, I think, here too. So, some of those details would have to be worked out overall, but I think that, I think there's a way to do it and make it smoother and more accessible, and less stigmatized as well.
Thank you. Further comments? Councilmember Anderson?
Thank you. I'm really enjoying this conversation, and I agree with Councilmember Weld that it would be wonderful to have some time, maybe a work session or something like that, where we can really go over some of these issues. That said, I like this amendment quite a bit. It simplifies things. Many cities have, you know, an honor system for their transit to begin with, and I think it's very respectful to assume that if somebody says, "I have a need," to just trust that they do. So I think this, well, I think this could be potentially very successful, and I hope that this passes. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll. On the amendment?
Councilmember Strobel?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Bergy?
Aye.
Christopherson?
Aye.
Gregert?
Aye.
And that amendment passes? Thank you, Councilmember McGregor. We are now back to the main resolution. And if there are further comments, discussion, thank yous on this item? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Bergy?
Aye.
Christopherson?
Aye.
Gregert?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
And that resolution passes on unanimous vote. We now move on to item number 24, which is resolution requesting an amendment to the purchase agreement for locomotive 2719, and exercising the city's option to purchase. We had a presentation last evening from Councilmember Strobel on this, and Visit Eau Claire, and Councilmember McGregor is seconding. Are there further questions that councilmembers may have of either the movers of this item, or potentially of folks who spoke to us last evening or are here this evening? Questions? Seeing none, this item is going to be moved, sorry, Councilmember Christopherson? Did you have a question?
I'm not sure that this is the right time for my question, but there were significant options that were presented last night during the public hearing, and I'm just wondering if, how those affect what is in front of us tonight.
I think this would be the right time, if you would like to ask questions of either staff or of Councilmember Strobel about those different options. I believe this is the right time.
Thank you, Vice President Worthman. Mr. Strobel, I'm wondering, the particular piece that I found intriguing was the six-month option that Duluth offered to work out some type of agreement of, and I'm just wondering whether or not we are amenable to that? Is that, I wonder if you would respond to that? Thank you.
I could, and I was going to actually ask to do a friendly to our own, our own resolution, to change a few of the words on there, and I don't know when I would talk about that. I could talk about it now. And I can explain why, and I guess maybe, I don't know if we should be moving it first or not.
Certainly. I think that's probably the best option. So this item will be moved by Councilmember Strobel, and Gregor is now on the floor. We can continue discussion on it. Councilmember Strobel?
So I would like to talk about making a friendly amendment, see if I get a second, and then I can explain it.
I'll second it.
I didn't even make it yet.
I trust you.
That's awesome.
Your amendment?
Okay, so, under the "now therefore be it resolved," the first one there, by the City Council of City of Eau Claire, that City Manager shall negotiate an amendment to the purchase agreement with the LSRM, extending the option to purchase locomotive 2719 to February 1, 2019. I would add there, "with no new conditions," comma, and adding the clause. So just those three, four words, "with no new conditions," and if I could get a second on that, I will explain it.
Are you queuing me? I second it.
Thank you. My thought on that is, we heard a lot last night, I would like the six months, I think it'd be nice for the community to be able to have that, but we got an email this morning that talked about adding all kinds of curatorial standards on that, which would make it impossible for us to even think about bringing it back as a static. You know, the museum up there, from reports of people that were up there, for a couple years, the train was outside, under an overpass, with snow and stuff, and yet in the curatorial standards, we're being asked to construct a conditioned building. I don't think some of these things are going to be possible for us, and the last time through, they wanted to add some curatorial standards on there as well, and the council did not put those in the purchase agreement. So, my thought would be to extend the purchase agreement as it is. If not, then we go to the second, be it further resolved clause. I guess that's what I'm talking about.
That, because it's a friendly, I don't believe we need to do anything more with that. Councilmember Beaton?
Yeah, I just have a quick question for City Attorney. You're ready. If you want to go ahead first, though.
City Attorney? Do we need to vote on that friendly?
Yeah, point of order. It was termed a friendly, but it was moved by a different council member.
Sure.
I would suggest a vote.
Okay. Councilwoman McGregor. So on that friendly amendment, is there further discussion specifically? Councilmember Beaton?
Thank you. My question's for the City Attorney. We, I'm wondering if you have a legal opinion on whether extending this agreement requires any sort of readjustment of the contract with curatorial standards, or?
City Attorney?
The, any amendment, whether it's an extension or otherwise, would require, you know, mutuality, would require agreement from the other parties. So really, what you're setting out here is simply your proposal, and how the museum may respond to that isn't known. And then as Councilmember Strobel indicated, if it's not agreeable to them, the next resolve clause would kick in to repurchase the engine.
Further questions on this friendly? Councilmember McGregor?
Thank you, Councilmember Worthman. I have a question about actually adding to the language a little bit, in order to make it a little, to add to the friendliness a little bit. And that's pretty much just correcting what I believe is more of a typo, I guess, and that's the, in the fifth whereas clause, it says, "In 2015, the city sold locomotive number 2719 to the Lake Shore Railroad Museum," when in fact it should read Lake Superior Railroad Museum. So that would be something that, to maybe package in with the amendment.
I believe we have to first-
Or do we have to do that?
Dispense with that, the motion on the table, is that correct? Yeah, we can do that after. On this amendment, are there any further discussion items council would like to bring? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Bergy?
Aye.
Christopherson?
Aye.
Gregert?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
And that amendment passes. Councilmember McGregor, would you like to make what I believe could be a friendly?
Yeah, thank you, Council Vice President. I, yeah, the friendly amendment, or the amendment, I guess, that I would like to make is to change Lake Shore Railroad Museum to Lake Superior Railroad Museum.
City Attorney?
Now that one's editorial, and you've got the mover and securer agreeing, so that one's a friendly, and you don't need to do anything else.
Thank you. Are there further discussions on this item? The resolution itself? Councilmember Anderson?
Yeah, one of the many things that came up in our meeting last night was this idea that if we were to, for instance, purchase back the engine, that we could then lease it to the museum. Is that something that we should be considering it now, or at this point? I'm just wanting to figure out what are the options going forward if we do, if we do purchase this. Do you have thoughts?
I think that's a question for Councilmember Strobel.
I could answer that, or I could speak to the whole thing, if you want, if there's more questions, or, which would you prefer?
If you want to speak to it.
Okay. Yes, and I have that in my closing statement here.
Oh, sorry.
No, that's fine. And maybe I'll just, I'll answer the question. That would be what I'll do. I think if the city owns it, they can do whatever they want with it. They can negotiate a new lease with the LSRM, they could put it out to different rail groups to lease it to, they could sell it, they could sell it back to them, they could sell it to somebody else, they could take it to the scrapyard. I think once the city owns it, they have a lot of choices. So, they certainly have those options, yes.
And further, Councilmember Strobel, did you have a statement?
I should have done that the first time. I just want to, I want to thank Mr. Dave Peterson. I know, I know he has a great love for the train, he's spent a lot of time on that train, and it's very near and dear to him. And I just, depending on how this all shakes out, I guess if it, if it does come back to the city here, I guess I would certainly want his help and efforts to help us make sure that we take care of that train correctly, if it does come back to Eau Claire. The Lake Shore Museum runs diesels all summer, and steam trains in the fall. It looks like a really nice ride, to be honest. A tour trip out, and a tour launch, and a tour return is one of their rides. That's $54 for an adult, $29 for a child, and entry to the museum's like $7. So, it's really nice to see them run. I'd like to actually go out there and do that. really nice to see them run. I'd like to actually go out there and do that sometime. But I suppose most citizens of Eau Claire will never get the opportunity to see a steam engine run, or a steam train up close. It's a long drive to Duluth, probably an overnight stay, and quite expensive, I would imagine. Although a static display does not run, it can be fired up. It would allow for all citizens to view it and marvel at it. So it's not just those who can afford to go up to Duluth to take that trip. I think Eau Claire is a different city, even, even different than it was three years ago. I think we have a very creative population that has shown the ability to raise money and fund projects. Light the bridge was $400,000. The Baroque sculpture was $45,000, just by visit Eau Claire alone. Some ideas and sites that have been given to me include Galloway Street by the S Bridge, where the, where the old depot used to be behind Banbury Place, Triangle of City Land across from Luther Hospital, adjacent to Cameron Street, the Forest Street Park by the new Veterans Trail, the Cannery District by the High Bridge, the railroad parking lot downtown, the Liner Building site downtown, Carson Park, and of course, River Prairie Park in Altoona. I personally would love to have the whistle blown at noon every day, or to fire it up as a static display on occasions. Maybe add a diner car, open that up for Food Truck Fridays. So until we investigate and come back to council with definitive site choices, costs, shelters, and maintenance, I don't think we can let this opportunity pass us by. The train is a valuable part of our city history. It's an asset and not a liability. Running versus static, there may not be a right answer here. But my obligations, I feel, are to the citizens of Eau Claire, to whom the train was given, whose citizens refurbished it, and those that would like to see it again. I don't believe that we are doing this train to not run again. Like Mr. Peterson said, and Mr. Beeler repeated, you do not know what happens when rail ownership changes. And we are also working to get passenger rail into the Eau Claire as well. So what is the worst-case scenario? We buy the train back, and we decide our options to bring it back will not work. Just going to get to your question. So now we own a train that Mr. Peterson said was a million-dollar train. I would expect us to do what we did not do before, potentially our due diligence. We could lease it back to the LSRM and retain the ownership. We could sell it back to them, or we could put it out for an RFP, on both of those options to the whole country, to give everybody and all the rail places a chance, maybe a few months to respond, as it does take train people and groups a while to figure out their logistics. The LSRM leased the engine from the LTPF for 10 years. And it's my understanding that they leased a lot of their equipment. So I have really no idea how the proposal came to the council the last time to sell that train to them for $2. I personally would not sell my Lionel train to anyone for $2. We could probably get, what, $300,000 just in scrap, probably up that to 500, just sell a nice train like that. So did we do the right thing for our citizens the last time? I'm not sure. So I really don't see a downside to extending this and getting some answers, or simply personally buying it now, which would probably be my first choice. I would like to give the area the opportunity to support this train in the Chippewa Valley, and I will support the resolution. And one more thing, if we're concerned about the financial, and maybe we don't have all our Ts crossed and our Is dotted right now, there's still the opportunity for our neighbors to the east to purchase that train, and from the city of Eau Claire, if we deem that as one of our options that we bring back to council, which sort of takes the financial burden away from the city of Eau Claire as well. So I think those are all options that are out there, and we need to investigate them. So thank you, and thank you, thank council for their time and indulging me on this. I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilmember Strobel. Further comments? Councilmember Weld?
Thank you, Council Vice President. Just a note, I appreciate Councilman Strobel's passion for the railroad, and then everyone that we got to listen to and hear speak last night. Obviously, it is an endeavor that people have a sincere love for. And my first exposure to the word runner was last night, and I thought that was really interesting. It makes you think of a racehorse that's raced hard all its life, and then eventually is put off to pasture, or wherever they go. But I can appreciate that from a train person, that it should be able to run and to go. But at the same time, I feel that it belongs here. I think that it was a gift to us, and we need to appreciate that and show our sincerity with that. And I think we can use it. I think we can come up with a plan. And really, all we're talking about now is, you know, either the six months or purchasing it. From there, you know, I hope that it doesn't remain static. I hope that we can find a way to fire it up and get kids up there with their engineer caps and their whistles, and we can take pictures, and all the other ideas that are going to be out there. There'll be a million of them. And I think we can make that happen, and I look forward to bringing it back to Eau Claire.
Thank you. Further comments? Councilmember Beaton?
Thank you. And thank you to Councilmember Strobel for his hard work on this. I appreciate your persistence. You've been talking about this train for a while, and it's true that our city has been a busy little city for the last couple of years. And I'm glad that we're at a point where we have the opportunity to talk about, about this now. I also wanted to thank the gentleman from Duluth who visited us last night and spoke to us. I know a lot more about trains now, and I'm excited to learn more. And I have to say, I came into the meeting last night, excited about the thought of, you know, bringing this train home, and thought was, kind of naively thought it was, it was going to be as a simple thing, and left our meeting a little bit more conflicted. And so I, you know, I do see the concerns over, over a different life that this train would experience here versus in Duluth. And I do, do understand differences in visitation, and how people might be visiting in Duluth versus here in Eau Claire. However, I think that, Councilmember Strobel said it very well, that we on this body are accountable to citizens of Eau Claire. And I think that, from what we've heard, the citizens of Eau Claire really want to see this train come home. And I think that it would add a lot of, a new type of culture to our city. We are experiencing a cultural reinvention of our city, and this is something that, something new that we can bring, even more new than what we are, we're seeing now. And so I think that, though I'm still feeling conflicted, I think that I, I'll be supporting this resolution because it gives us some options to, to see what most, what might be most viable. So thank you for giving us those options.
Thank you, Councilmember Beaton. Further, Councilmember Christopherson?
Thank you, Vice President Worthman. I, I appreciate the comments that have been made. I'd like to commend Councilmember Strobel. One of the things about this effort is, it takes a certain amount of courage to grab that almost too late moment, and to put the investment, and the research, and the energy into, what I understand was your first real whistle presentation. And it was stunning. So I would say to the public, if you have not had a chance to watch last night's public hearing, the presentation was, was worth seeing, but the comments from the public were very, very informative. So all of those things being said, I think from this motion, what I appreciate the most is the opportunity for our community to develop their own voice about how this might be best used. I do have heard from constituents at this point of time of blossoming. There's also the sense of, some of our history has been at risk. And bringing this particular item back to Eau Claire at this time, I think, is, is a wonderful opportunity. I think it feeds in with that idea of walking historic tours. I think that this is a really good opportunity for us to have that conversation. And I thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Christopherson. Further discussion? Councilmember Bergy?
I have a comment and a question, if that's okay. Thank you. Yeah, what I've heard from my constituents and people from Eau Claire is that they support bringing the train back overwhelmingly. I have gotten emails from the people think that they should, we should stay in Duluth. However, those are all out-of-state emails. So I am more geared toward my constituents, the people of Eau Claire. Seems to make sense that they, their opinion weighs more heavier with me than the out-of-state, though I do appreciate their feedback and their experience and expertise. My question would be, I guess, about the money, is where it would, so we would either, we wait six months, so then there would be next, so then we would move it next year, so that would be next year's budget, if I, I mean, or would it come from the budget? Or would, and then if they don't want the extension, then we would have to come up with the money this year's budget, right? And I know we've talked about public-private partnerships, but just if there's more information on that, I think it'd be good to have. Thanks. And if I beat a Councilmember Strobel, or?
Councilmember Strobel?
That's a great question. I think that's the question of the day, isn't it? And I'm not typically finding myself in this situation. But our intention was to come back in September with viable plans, funding options, and all that thing for council to make decisions on. I mean, I really think that was my original intention, was to have all these ducks in a row by that time. It'll be a busy couple of months if we can do that. If we can't do it, we're going to have to address that as a group, I think, as well. I don't have any great answers right now. And again, if we decide on the city to our east, it's really not an issue for us.
Thank you. Councilmember Anderson?
Well, I have found this conversation to be fascinating. I never knew that trains and train history could be so interesting. So I'm so grateful for the people that brought this forward, and the people that came last night and shared their expertise and their passion. This has been, been really interesting, which is partly why this is such a hard issue. I think when you're, when you're dealing with an artifact, there's always the scale of preservation versus access. And usually, the more access you have, the less preservation you have, and the less access you have, the more preservation. And so this is a hard place to figure out exactly where you want to land with this particular artifact. And it's hard for me, especially because I don't have a sense of what concrete plans are in place, and what could be the outcomes for this particular artifact. And I appreciate very much the imagination that is going into thinking about the role that this, this engine could play in the life of Eau Claire going forward. That kind of thinking is, is really inspiring, especially as our community is really coming together over various creative notions for our community. And I like that. But I also feel that part of my obligation to the community is an obligation to its history and to its preservation. And I sometimes, I'm torn, because I also do think that there is merit to having museum-quality preservation of this, of this engine. I'm also concerned about potentially escalating costs that come from acquiring such a heavy object, that's so fragile, and at the same time, so huge to move. So I have, I'm having a lot of challenges figuring out where I land on this. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilmember McGregor.
Thank you, Council Vice President Worthman. I, yeah, I mean, part of the, yeah, I do agree with previous speakers that this is really, it is a challenge, and this is, you know, and it has historically been a challenge for our community to, to find, you know, a home for, for this locomotive here, and, and to kind of take that transition to make it an operable train, like in the leadership that it took from residents of our community, like Mr. Peterson, and many volunteers and donors, the federal government contributing money to, to, with the intent that the train be operating here in Eau Claire, almost $400,000, that was, that went toward that from the federal government. And today, you know, it is, you know, it has operated, and it has been on display in the past at the Lake Superior Railroad Museum, which really sounds like a world-class showcase for, for the locomotive. And so I definitely will be visiting there, for one. And, you know, this is kind of, this, this whole topic, like, opens my eyes to, to a lot of, a lot of possibilities. Some of them are definitely possibilities that I think we really need to find a way to share with our whole community here, because I think there is interest in connecting our city to the Twin Cities, or to Madison, or beyond, maybe to Duluth with passenger train service again. And this is, this is one way to build momentum toward that, is to, or at least get people interested in the history, is to actually have something that they can see, or maybe they can experience. And maybe, maybe this train in, in five or 10 years, or maybe even next year, could be operating, for all we know, here in the Chippewa Valley. So it really, the tough part, one of the toughest parts is, it really, we don't know where exactly those opportunities are going to arrive, or when, and who in the, beyond the city as an entity will step up to do that. And we have a history in our community, the city helping to facilitate agreements with private operators, or, or nonprofit organizations, to be able to do big things. And, and this could be the next big thing. And so that's kind of where I'm at, is like, I'm open to the possibilities that we, maybe it's, maybe we hash out a lot of details in the next month, and that's really our window and our, our chance. And if we don't own the, the train, we really don't have a chance at all. And obviously, I think that the museum in Duluth would, would take good care of the locomotive and restore it further, and make it operate again. But I, I think we need to spread the, the movement around to our community, and make sure that is something we thoroughly vet the possibilities with. And unfortunately, it has to happen very soon, but, you know, we could really, we could be missing something unless we move tonight.
Thank you, Councilmember McGregor. Do I see any further comments or questions? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Worthman?
Aye.
Anderson?
No.
Beaton?
Aye.
Bergy?
Aye.
Christopherson?
Aye.
Gregert?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye. And that resolution passes. Moving on to Agenda Item Number 25. Resolution extending and restating the memorandum of understanding between the City of Eau Claire, Carson Park Baseball Renovation Group for fundraising efforts in regards to renovation of Carson Park Baseball Stadium. Mr. Pipinger?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Before the City Council's a resolution extending and restating the memorandum of understanding between the City of Eau Claire and the Carson Park Baseball Renovation Group for fundraising efforts in regards to the renovations at the Carson Park Baseball Stadium. On March 14, 2017, the original MOU was approved by the City Council, and the expiration date of that MOU is June 30 of 2018, so just days away. This revised memorandum of understanding will extend the expiration date of the agreement to September 30 of 2019. Additionally, the group will be required to increase their contributions to $1.5 million, and the turf portion of the agreement has been removed. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Pipinger. Questions from council? No? Thank you. Then, on a motion by Councilmember, it'll be Christopherson and Strobel, this resolution has been moved. Is there a discussion? Seeing none, Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Bergy?
Aye.
Christopherson? Christopherson?
Aye.
Gregert?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
And that resolution passes. Moving on to Item Number 26, is a resolution approving a process to fill a vacancy on the City Council. And we heard a presentation last evening from City Attorney, Mr. Steve Nick. This item will be moved. First, I should ask, is there further questions, clarification from any council members to our city attorney or city manager at this time? Seeing none. On a motion then by Councilmember Anderson, seconded by Councilmember Weld, item number 26 has been moved and is open for discussion. Councilmember Christopherson.
Thank you, Vice President Worthman. Last night during the conversation and the presentation by City Attorney, Mr. Nick, there was one possibility that we didn't really talk about, and I'm wondering. So, the one that wasn't presented would be if we were to continue through this year with an acting president, which would be Vice President, Mr. Worthman, and you retained your district seat, and the presidency was then open for election in April, is that something that we could entertain? Or is, does, is there something that suggests that that position has to be filled? So, maybe that's a question for Mr. Nick.
Mr. Nick.
Yeah, thank you, happy to. Sorry for not being clear enough last evening, but that's exactly the issue in front of you. So, the motion, we'll always give you motions in the affirmative to do something. If we give you motions to not do something and you vote no on them, you got a double negative, and you're in a quandary, right? So, this is in the affirmative in terms of, one, what you've done in the past, and plus it, again, it just puts it in the positive. But it's a decision point. Do you want to appoint or not? And so, if you don't want to, you simply vote no on this motion, and then what would happen is just what you were saying. You would remain as a council of 10 by operation of your local city ordinance. Vice President Worthman would continue as council pro temp, or, you know, in the temporary, in the absence. And then by operation of state law, the electors in spring would vote on a new council president. So, that's if you vote no, or, you know, don't take action on this in the affirmative in some way. But conversely, if you want to fill it so you can get back to a council of 11, then this is a model that we've used previously to re, to address the vacancy and fill it.
Councilmember Anderson.
Vice President, may I make a comment, then?
Absolutely.
So, in thinking about this situation that the council finds itself in, I would like to be as transparent as possible with the community about how this decision is being made. So, I find myself, again, as Councilmember Anderson said, a little conflicted, because transparent would be, could be to invite persons to apply for this position and allow that process to work its way out. Transparent would also be to have all of the elected officials sit until a public election is held in April, which I, as I began to think more, spend more time thinking about it, is the one that gives the public the most power in this moment. So, at this moment, I'm thinking that I would not support this motion or this resolution.
Councilmember Strobel.
Thank you, and I've been trying to think about all these different options as well. And I agree with Councilmember Christopherson on this. I would be most comfortable allowing Vice President Worthman to continue serving in his role as council president. I think the council president is different than appointing an at-large or a district seat. It's the council president. And I kind of went back and tried to figure out the reasoning behind the election cycles we have now, the 5-5-1. And it was my understanding that they did that so that the council did not elect their own leader, so that there wasn't cronyism involved, or favoritism. And so, I think you could potentially run into concerns about that with the community as well. So, that's why they did it. So, the council president was voted on by the City of Eau Claire. And so, I think appointing someone sort of runs against the reasoning and the logic behind this, and it's a different situation than we've ever been in. But I certainly would be most comfortable about letting Councilmember Worthman continue just to serve as the acting president. He doesn't have to give up his seat. You know, if he wants to run again in the spring, then he has that opportunity, like everybody else. So, I have a few other reasons for that, but I, that's where I'd be most comfortable.
Councilmember Beaton.
Thank you, Council Vice President. I'm also feeling extremely conflicted. I guess, but before I wanted, before I get into some of my thoughts, I wanted to raise just a question of general interest in potentially postponing, just because we are missing two council members. This is a, seems to be a big decision to make with great implications to this body. And I, with two council members missing, I wonder if there's interest in postponing. I know that, I know that I've been anticipating this conversation and this decision be made, and postponing it for two weeks. It would be, it would continue the challenge, I guess. But I want, I guess I just wanted to throw that question out there, whether any of my colleagues are interested in that. It's not something I'm ready to move yet, but...
Did you want to make a statement as well?
Sure.
Okay. Councilmember Beaton.
So, I guess to, just since I have the floor, to add to my thoughts, I'm really seeing things both ways as well. I think that the council president position is a position that requires a unique amount of expertise in guiding this body and working with, more intimately with staff to prepare our agendas and run the meetings. I think that in that way, it seems to make sense to appoint a council member, a currently serving council member, or to allow Council Vice President Worthman to continue to serve as president, or serving president. But I also see validity in opening the process up to the community as we have in the past. I think that there are community members in our community now who have, who have a unique expertise as well, that perhaps doesn't come with serving on council. So, I'm feeling really challenged, but I'm looking forward to hearing what the rest of you have to say.
Thank you. Councilmember Bergy.
Thank you, Vice President. I shouldn't have. There we go. A clarifying question for legal expert, Mr. City Attorney. And I don't, it's a truly question, and I don't mean to, like, catch you or anything like that, because I might be not reading the legalese very well. But I followed, I did my research, as I do, and I looked up the statute that we referenced in our agenda and packet, and it doesn't say, it says that it will be filled by appointment by the common council. And I know the wording that was in our packet said unless council decided otherwise, but I don't see that wording in the statute. So, I was just, again, I might be miss something, or maybe I have an old version of the statutes, but according to how I read this, without my legal expertise, is that we need to appoint, because it says, "How filled?" By appointment by the common council. But I might be missing something. Thank you.
City Attorney.
The appointment is discretionary. The shall language is the next election. So, there's no requirement that you have to appoint. That's your decision point today. What is required on the vacancy is that it stand at the next election. So, it is your choice of whether to appoint in the interim or not.
Further, further thoughts? No?
Well, I do.
Sure.
I do, I do think it's important to have full representation, that we have, I mean, one thing, if the election was next month, but, you know, April's a long ways away, and that's after another winter, so, it seems like far away. And that's, you know, part of our charter is that we have 11 people representing Eau Claire, and I think that's important to have full representation. And so far, I think you're doing a fabulous job, you know? But I do think it's extra duties on your plate, Mr. Vice President, and not, I think you, I wonder if your District 4 people might, I mean, maybe not, but it might be taxing to, because you're a district person, so you're representing them specifically, and you're going to be spread thin. So, I don't know, I think the representation would be spread thin for a long, you know, all through the winter and next April. So, whether we do it, whether we appoint internally or externally, I'm leaning more towards externally to open it up, because I do think that's more democratic, and see who wants to run, I mean, see who's out there. But yeah, that's what I, in the best interests of the city, I think full representation is the way to go.
Thank you. Councilmember Anderson.
Yeah, just to respond to something Councilmember Beaton brought up, I would be fine moving this discussion to our next meeting so more people can talk, because I think it is an important issue. It's one I also feel conflicted about for the reasons that Councilmember Christopherson brought up. It's hard for me to know which is more democratic, continuing to function as a body made up of members who are all elected, or appointing someone so that we can have the, a more complete number of 11. So, I'm struggling with this a little bit. Thank you.
Councilmember McGregor.
Thank you, Council Vice President. Yeah, I, it is one of those things where, just in the last day or so, some new thoughts have come into my head, and because of what other folks have expressed, and my kind of default, I guess, as someone who has been in Eau Claire for most of the last 18 years, is that whenever there has been a vacancy on the council, there would be an appointment that's opened up to the entire community. And so, that was kind of the default in my head at the beginning, because it's just what we've always done. But maybe it's not always, it's maybe just within the last more recent history. And I think I did know that we had that choice before this came up, but I think it's something that we may need some more time to, since I'm, since I'm starting to waver a little bit on my initial thought that we should automatically open this up. But I do think there are plenty of good reasons to open it up, and one of them being that we have a lot of work to do, and 11 people is a lot better than 10. And then I think a lot of citizens have a lot of, that want to work with as many people as they can to get things done. So, I think it would benefit people to have, it would benefit our community to have more members up here. I think it's also a civic engagement opportunity for the community to really think about, like to have, you know, say we have 15 applicants, and, you know, usually there's folks that come out of the woodwork that you're like, yeah, yeah, that person actually would, yeah, that person should totally be more involved in city government. And it really, and some people, when they see that there's an opportunity out there, ask that question themselves in their own head and step up. And maybe it's someone who has served before, maybe it's someone who is pretty defiant that they're not going to run in the election coming up in April, and they would rather just help us with the transition. We've done that in the past, where Terry Sheridan had served in, to fill a vacancy for a period of time, is my understanding. So, now, that goes back a few years, but it's, that could be an opportunity that we would want to take advantage of, to have someone serve in that way. And at the same time, I think we have a lot of great leaders on the, among us on council, including our current vice president, who would be able to carry the, carry us through. So, overall, right now, I'm leaning toward opening up to everybody to a point, but I'd also potentially be open to giving ourselves more time.
Councilmember Weld, would you like to speak?
Thank you, Council Vice President. I guess in regards to the postponement, I feel like we'd be putting, setting a precedent. Obviously, we're going to have bigger decisions, or just as big of decisions in the future agenda items that we feel like we hope that all of us could be there and be a part of. And, you know, events arise, and we're not always going to be able to be there. And I think if we start that now, where, because we don't have everyone here that we postpone, I feel like that's going to be a challenge for us to address in the future. And, you know, generally, some of these postponements can lead to delays in either public projects or decisions that staff has been waiting on and needs to get answered, and now to push it back. And in this regard, you know, we really, right now, would only have this, if we were to have an interim or an appointment, that person would only serve eight months. If we push it back, you know, that brings it down to seven months, and then I almost feel like we should, we should make a decision now and not make it later. So, in regards to what I favor, I'd like, I guess I would prefer not to appoint a council president. I feel comfortable with Vice President Worthman serving as our vice president and president, you know, I guess interim. I feel confident that as a council of 10, we can still get the work done that's necessary of us. I feel that experience is huge, and I think the City of Eau Claire really relies on us to at least have some experience, both as council members and as council president. I can't imagine, I was the last appointment, and I appreciated that opportunity to apply and appreciate being selected by the council. And that process, I feel, works as a council member, but I think as a council president, because of the additional responsibilities and expectations and, you know, relationships with staff and understanding of processes and how our city governs, our personalities and knowing who we are and what we are, I had some conversations earlier with some of our council members, and, you know, if we look back at those that were just elected in April, they had six months to kind of get acclimated to our council. They had the opportunity to attend our meetings and to meet with us at different events and have a chance to meet with staff when they had the opportunity, and to ask questions. Now, for us to appoint a city council president that may not have any city governing experience, would come in and really only have a few weeks to all of a sudden take on that role. And I don't know, I certainly couldn't have done it, you know, a year ago when I was appointed, and then... when I was appointed, and then all of a sudden to become city council president. The other part of the experience, I think, is we have four brand-new council members and myself, only one-year-old. So five of us are, are relatively new to, to, to city governing and, and to our city council. To add a brand, you know, new city council president with potentially no experience on top of that, I, I don't think is, is serving the best interest of Eau Claire. I, I think they look at for us to, to make sure that we're making the right decisions, um, for them, and, and that we have the right people in place to make those decisions.
Thank you. Councilmember Strobel?
Um, thank you. I, I wouldn't support a postponement at this time either. Um, I think it's summertime, and we're always going to have, people are probably going to be gone. Um, a couple of things I was thinking about as we were, we were talking here, um, and I actually just talked, thought about it when Councilmember McGregor said that, that we've, we've filled them all before. The difference is, I, I believe, is that, um, for filling this position, we're also going to have current council members applying for the position. So to me, it, it would seem like a bit of a, I don't want to, I'm not going to call it a farce, but it, it's, you know, I, I think the preference, at least from my perspective, would be to, to support a current council member. So people coming in from outside, I'm not, I'm not sure how the rest of you would look at it, but, I mean, I, I personally think that the council right now needs continuity. And I think there's four experienced council members, or experienced, or, you know, five years or more, that, that could adequate, adequately serve as, as council president right now. And I, I think, just think that continuity is very important, and I think if you line up 10 people here against some sitting council members, I, I'm not sure how they would, how they would fare there, and I, and I don't know that to put them through that process is, is very fair either. Um, the other thing with the, the timeframe, um, you know, the end of December is, is when you have to file your papers for council president. So, um, it's not really going to be that far away from when we potentially could appoint somebody anyway. Appointing somebody might give them an unfair advantage in an election as well. Um, and we have gone, in the past, we have gone, I think, what was it, maybe seven or, seven or eight months when Councilmember Dux fell ill, um, without a 11th member, and, and we seem to function just fine. So I, I guess for the, for those reasons, I, I would still support just Councilmember Worthman. I think he's doing a nice job, so.
Well, thank you. Further, maybe if there's a motion to be made or a further discussion first?
I just have a question, I think, it's a question. So is it an option to, I think you were alluding to, alluding to this, Councilmember Strobel, to do an internal, if we choose appointment, then we would have to decide if it's either going to be external or internal? Or is it an option to do, is, do we have to decide first to make an appointment, and then we, because I kind of feel like there's three options, the way I'm understanding, is that we don't appoint anyone, and Vice President Worthman acts as president, or we appoint someone within the body, or we open it up externally, and that might include internal, like, at one of, um, council members now, plus the community, right? Is that, am I understanding that correct?
As far as I understand it, Councilmember Bergy, is that our decision point is really whether to appoint, and if we do, whatever that process looks like, we would then go forward and create that process. But City Attorney, um, do you have anything to add to that? That's kind of how I understand, and if we decide not to, then it defaults to what we have.
Certainly, thank you. Uh, the resolution that's in front of you, one would choose to appoint, and then would utilize an appointment process that we've utilized in the past, which is a citywide, uh, advertisement and application process. So if there is a desire to appoint, but to do it only, uh, among internal, you know, sitting council members, you would want to amend the present motion. If you simply don't want to appoint at all, there's no need to amend anything, it just vote no on, on the resolution. But it, it's all in front of you. Those, those are your ways to manipulate it to, to what your preference is.
Thank you, City Attorney. Councilmember Beaton?
I have a related question. Um, do, uh, in order to pass this, the resolution in front of us, do we need half of the people here today, or half of our body? So six, or four?
City Attorney?
The, um, the requirement on all resolutions and ordinances is six for final adoption. On amendments, uh, which are parliamentary, it's the majority of those voting. So you have eight, so that's five. Uh, but that's only on an amendment, if any amendment comes forward. Uh, but you need six under state law, a majority of your full complement, to finally pass any resolution or ordinance.
Thank you. Further, um, motions, amendments, discussion? Councilmember Weld?
Thank you, Council Vice President. I, just a quick statement. I, I really truly believe that, that the city would prefer to see the citizens of Eau Claire, the residents of Eau Claire, elect our city council president, and that it not be decided on s, who has six votes. I, I, I really do believe that, and obviously, we're all going to have different ideas and opinions of that, but, but I think in the end, you know, we're here representing those folks, and I, I think that, um, I think that they, they've had the opportunity in the past and, and to, to elect the city council president. Obviously, they'll have it next spring, but we're taking that away from them for the next eight months, and, and I don't think that was the intent, so.
Thank you. Further discussion? Councilmember McGregor?
Thank you, Council Vice President. I, yeah, I, I still kind of, I'm going back to tradition here. I, it's strange maybe to be someone doing that as a new council member, but I, uh, I do not necessarily maybe feel that the city council presidency is, is quite as unique as, I mean, obviously, it's unique in Wisconsin, that, I think we're actually the only state that has an elected city council president. But I don't necessarily, I feel like, you know, voters all have the opportunity to vote for the city council president, just as they do any council member, and therefore I, the leaning that I have is that they should therefore have the same right to be appointed to that position. Um, so it's not just the, the right to be elected to it, but it's the right to be appointed, just as you are with all of the other, um, positions on this council. So that's kind of the, the way I, I'm looking at it, and maybe it's simplistic and, and not, uh, taking into account the gravity of the work that it is and the, and the experience that's required, but I think we can still all vote and appoint based on that duty to have an experienced person, um, which I think is not necessarily required, but I consider it pretty important that we, that we appoint someone who is experienced and who would be able to do a great job, uh, leading the meeting. Um, and also serving on the, the, the committees and, and working with, more closely with staff on a day-to-day basis even. Uh, so, um, however, I don't feel extremely strongly about this. It's just the way I'm leaning right now, and not to try to tease people into getting me to vote a different way, but it's a, it's a, um, it's just something that seems like we should allow appointments.
Further, I'm certain we do. Councilmember Bergy?
Yeah, I guess that's where my brain goes too, is that we've, my experience, that we've always, or the council's always appointed, so why all of a sudden would we not appoint? Seems like that was, yeah, so I, I guess the same thing, like, why, I know there's different duties for this council president, but it's, that position doesn't have any more power than, I mean, their vote is the same as our vote. Um, so I guess I don't see why all of a sudden we would change it, but that's, I agree with what Councilmember.
Councilmember Beaton?
Thank you. Um, I really appreciate all your comments. Um, I feel like I'm gaining more clarity with every word. Um, so that's been really helpful. Um, I, I'm still feeling a little unsure, but I, I guess I, um, reflecting on this idea of, uh, doing nothing, um, now and waiting for election, I, I, I think the most clarity I have around this is the feeling that, uh, representation really does matter, um, and that, um, our citizens deserve to be represented by a full council. Um, we see, we see, um, at the state level that, um, even the Supreme Court ruled that, um, that we're required to, that the, the people of Wisconsin are, um, deserve representation, and that, um, that, you know, open seats need to be filled as soon as possible. And so, um, I, I really, I think that that's really the, the clearest thing to me now, and, and, um, I'm just kind of still trying to figure out how we might be able to do that, whether it be, um, an internal or an external process.
Thank you. Councilmember Beaton, Councilmember Anderson?
Um, I continue to feel conflicted, but I've been benefiting a lot from listening to this, uh, conversation, especially listening to people who are, have more experience on council than I do, and thinking about this need for continuity. And one thing that Councilmember Strobel brought up that's stinking with me is, uh, the, you know, having people apply, having the public apply for, uh, this appointment, um, on the one hand, offers a great opportunity to, uh, promote participation in government. On the other hand, if there is going to be kind of a, uh, an emphasis on experience, if we're considering experience to be a key factor in our decision-making, um, I would feel bad, uh, again, putting people through what can be a challenging process, um, if ultimately what we are looking for is someone who has experience.
Councilmember Weld?
Thank you, Council Vice President. Just a question for, um, Mr. McGregor.
Certainly.
In the event that only one person applies, and if we were to agree to have an appointment, and only one person applied, what, what does that look like?
City Attorney?
Good or bad, depending on whether six of you like the one person who applies. I mean, there's, there's no requirement of multiple individuals, so.
But in the event that he, he didn't gain the votes, then do we start over again? Is that the process?
Right, you would have to, or make the decision. So I mean, every time it's in front of you, I mean, you could appoint or you could not appoint. So, I mean, you, at that point, you could always say, "Well, jeez, we're not going to relist now, it's August," or "It's September, and now we think it's too close hypothetically," and you could choose to just let it rest at that point. Uh, but otherwise, you'd have, you'd have to, you know, re-advertise.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember McGregor?
Uh, thank you, Council Vice President. I, I guess when I, I did repeat the word experience a few times, so I should probably clarify a bit what I mean by that, or what I'm, you know, I don't necessarily think it necessarily needs to be experience, like, serving on this council, um, for it, that, you know, I think there, there could be former council members, there could be, uh, people who have worked in city government before, or people that, um, uh, maybe have chaired a committee, or a board of directors, or folks that just have a lot of leadership experience, a lot of experience working, uh, with local government, and, and maybe they've served on a council in another city, or s, served on a county board, or, or administrator, and, I mean, there's all sorts of, at the same time, I'm kind of open to, to what the community feels is experience that is relevant, because it's, we might, might be thinking a little too narrowly about what experience really is, and what could really benefit this council, and what could benefit the community. So, um, while I think my bias is going to be toward experience, I don't necessarily know what that means, because I think we could be surprised, uh, by folks who would step up, and, and that's part of the exciting part about it.
So I don't believe we have any motion to postpone. It didn't seem that the body was interested at this time in doing that. Um, unless there's further, uh, discussion, further ideas, or any amendments, um, we will be taking a vote on this process as outlined, uh, in our resolution, um, and I will ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Clarification?
Clarifications, Councilmember Strobel?
So a no vote means we stay where we're at, right?
Yeah, I believe so. A no vote would mean that, um, we would not look to appoint, that we would not use this process as outlined, and that I would continue to serve, um, in the role. Yeah. Um, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Beaton?
Aye.
Bergy?
Aye.
Christopherson?
No.
Gregert?
Aye.
Strobel?
No.
Weld?
No.
Worthman?
Aye.
Anderson?
No.
And that motion fails to get six votes, and so I believe it fails. Um, moving on to our ordinances for action, starting with, um, an annexation ordinance, this is item number 27. Uh, an ordinance in accordance with, uh, section 660217 of the Wisconsin statutes, annexing the city of Eau Claire, and particularly to the 11th Assessment Ward, First Aldermanic District being a part of the northwest quarter of the northwest quarter, section 11279, Town of Seymour, Eau Claire County, as shown in planning drawing 181A, which is also known as the Cruitt Petition. Um, per statutes, um, this is going to require a two-thirds vote of elected members of our governing body, um, and therefore a affirmative vote, and Mr. Allen, um, will have a little more on that.
Thank you very much, Mr. Vice President, members of council, again, before this evening, his request, uh, suiting from the Cruitt family to, uh, annex into the corporate limits of the city of Eau Claire, as shown in the map here, is a two-acre property, uh, along the South Street. It is currently developed with a single-family residence. Applicant is wishing to become part of the city of Eau Claire in order to access existing city sewer and water services located in the area. Certainly standard for any questions.
Thank you. Does council have any clarifying questions on this item? Seeing none? Thank you, Ms. Allen. Then on a motion by council member, um, I believe we're back around to Councilmember Beaton and Gregert, um, this ordinance has been moved, uh, and is open for discussion. Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Bergy?
Aye.
Christopherson?
Aye.
Gregert?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
And that ordinance passes. We are now on to announcements and directives from the city manager and city council. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Vice President Worthman. Uh, only that wishing all of you and the citizens a safe and happy and fun holiday week next week with the Fourth of July, there's, uh, a lot of things happening in this community, and I'm not going to list them all off, but, uh, hopefully you get out and enjoy the community and have a safe and fun time with your friends and family.
Thank you, and I want to recognize Councilmember Strobel with the announcement as well.
Thank you. I just, I just wanted to thank you, Council, Vice President Worthman, for having our former council members back and giving them their plaques and allowing them to speak. It was, for me, it was really nice to, to see them again, and that's a tough situation, and, um, I just thought it was very magnanimous, and, and I was really, really glad to see it.
Thank you, appreciate that, those kind words. Well, I think that's all for this evening. Unless there's any further business, uh, this meeting is adjourned.
This program was brought to you by a cooperation between Newsworks and the city of Eau Claire. A transcript of this meeting is available for the hearing impaired. It will be available within seven days of this telecast. Call 715-839-4912, or TDD 715-839-1689, or write, Eau Claire City Clerk, PO Box 5148, Eau Claire, Wisconsin 54702-5148. Newsworks is made possible by continuing community support. If you would like to volunteer or make a donation, please contact us via phone at 715-839-5067, or online at valleymediaworks.org.